Call to order, back to public session. Announcement items from closed session. Drum roll, please. The Board has voted six to one with trustee Martenson voting no on hiring of Assistant Superintendent, Vice President Academic Affairs Eric Shear. With a start date of, can you wait? Five eleven? And being hired as Assistant Superintendent, Vice President Academic Affairs, Schedule L three. Congratulations, Eric.
Congratulations, Eric. It was a well-conducted search and we're very proud to have you join Napa Valley College family now as its newest Assistant Superintendent. Oscar still holds the record of being senior, so there you go.
I expect Eric's will turn gray soon too, right? Do you have anything at all, Eric, that you want to comment on?
Just thank you for this opportunity. I'm thrilled to be joining the college in this new role and I'm really looking forward to working with everybody in the coming years. Thank you.
Are you going to cry?
Absolutely not.
Then I would ask that Eric Shear lead us today in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seven point three, adoption of agenda. We do have a request to pull item fifteen point one one as staff is needing to prepare a little bit more time to bring that item back in June. Any other comments on the adoption of agenda? Seeing none, agenda adopted. Eight point one, public hearing, open, public hearing, Napa Valley College Faculty Association, CCA, CTA, NEA, 2018, 2019, initial proposal for negotiations. Any comments? Nine point one, public comment. Public comment and guidelines. At this time, the Board will devote a total of up to fifteen minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the Board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the Board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future report agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Individuals will be limited to five-minute presentations at this time. The Board Chair will poll those in attendance regarding their intent to speak on any item on the agenda. I don't, oh, yes, I do. I was looking in the wrong, oh, boy, do I. We have some that are agenda. Give me one second to sort these on agenda items or public comment. All right. We have three just on general public comment and I will start with Gary Orton, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I'd like to first hand something out. I would like to speak about the district's lack of an adequate whistleblower protection policy, your board policy, BP seventy-seven hundred. It's important to have a strong whistleblower protection policy for several reasons. One is it enhances compliance with policies that the Board sets. It enhances compliance with policies that the district is required to comply with. It's an important element in any fraud detection program and will be especially important if the district is about to undertake a large capital expenditure program. Lastly, it provides notice that the Board encourages employees to communicate with individual Board members in matters having to do with waste, fraud, and abuse that they may not otherwise be privy to. The handout that I handed to you has underlinings, which are additions that I propose that you adopt, and I know you can't do it tonight. The strikeouts are things that should be eliminated. Each one of those provisions is mandated by state law. It's called the, very long name for it, the Reporting by Community College Employees of Improper Governmental Activities Act. And it's in the education code. Actually, it's cited in your current policy. Your current policy says you will only give whistleblower protection to employees who disclose illegal activities. The act, in the education code, says, oh, no, and it's not just illegal activities, it's improper activities. And what they, they define what they mean by improper activities. If it's in violation of district policies or administrative procedures, including but not limited to harassment, discrimination, or conflict of interest. If the disclosures have to do with economically wasteful activities or involve gross misconduct, incompetence, or inefficiency. Or if the disclosure has to do with a substantial and specific danger to public health or safety. None of those occur in your current whistleblower protection program or policy. You need to have that, especially after last month's board meeting. You need to take this affirmative action to dispel the notion that it is improper for an employee to communicate their concerns to individual trustees. The law says they have the right to do that. The law says that you have to protect them if they do that. Two weeks ago, on April the twenty-sixth, I submitted this formal proposal in a three-page letter with this exact proposal to the President and the Board Chair requesting this be put on your agenda. To date, I've received zero communication from anybody at the college regarding the status of that request, even though under state law, I'm entitled to make that request to have it put on your agenda. Now, I could understand that you say we need to do some more work. It's very complex. It's not really that complex. This was modeled, this proposed board policy is modeled on one that was exact, BP seventy-seven hundred adopted in November by North Orange County Community College District. I also, I'm not going to burden you with now, but also with a proposed revision to your Administrative Regulation seventy-seven hundred, which goes into things that you would need to know. If you're a trustee and get a disclosure, what do you do with it? You need to have a policy, administrative policy on that. Likewise, you know, what does the district do with that? There needs to be a written procedure for that. In the Administrative Regulation that I provided the administration and asked them to adopt themselves, and they could adopt that tomorrow because that's the law. It follows the law, but you're not doing that. And you know, it feels like I have reached the wall of silence that this college is so famous for. Thank you very much.
And I wasn't receipt of that, Gary, and just, you know, it's not, we just, that doesn't mean it's not going to be on the agenda or that it's being ignored, so.
I would like that communication, when your regulation actually calls for you to communicate that to me, which was never done in two weeks.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll make sure that we respond a little more quickly on that. Thank you. Okay, I have James Hinton.
Good evening, James Hinton, thirty-five, seventy-four, Hunter Circle, Napa, California. I agree with the last speaker. I think I recently had trouble when I asked for some information about your verbal contracts. The time expired, it went by, I had to come down here and basically corner, I forget his name, I don't see him tonight, though, but, and then I got the information. So you need to respond to the public. If you want to serve us, you need to respond to people in a timely fashion. But I wanted to say thank you to the Associate Students of Napa Valley College. Last month, they did a terrific job hosting a debate for the Napa City Council. It was at the same time in this meeting, so I'm sure you missed it, but it was an amazing job. It was much fancier than I thought it was going to be and the moderator was amazing. Manveer Sandhu did an amazing job, much better than Anderson Cooper or Megyn Kelly or any of those. He made them look like chopped livers. So I hope you'll encourage the students to make this a tradition, to hold more debates in the future and to stay involved in local politics. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again for Manveer, to Manveer for doing that.
It was definitely a team effort and I want to thank those who were also part of that effort.
All right. I'd like to thank everybody for being here. My name is Ronaldo Garcia. I'm a student at the Napa Valley College. As a student, part of succeeding in school is having a good counselor and I feel like they're not recognized or valued enough in today's time. Today, I'll be talking about my counselor, Alex Guero. First, I'll talk about what he has done for me and finally, my personal evaluation on it. My counselor has helped me specifically build an ed plan specifically for my classes and my major. He has helped me find resources in my classes to succeed in them and register for them. Coming from the Napa, coming from the high school and not knowing much about college, I felt at ease through the transition and felt less stressed out. I would like to thank everybody for listening to what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We've had so much good news tonight. It's been so heart-filling, hasn't it? Okay, thank you. And is there any more public comment for general information? That's all the, those were all the cards I had. Okay. We will go on to constituent group reports. Ten point one, Academic Senate, Amanda Badger.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to begin first by congratulating Eric Shear on his being hired as the Permanent Vice President of Academic Affairs. In my remaining year of service in the role of Academic Senate President, I look forward to continuing what I believe has been a productive relationship between administration and faculty. That said, we've got lots of work to do in the coming year. This past Tuesday, the Academic Senate held its last meeting of the year. No matter how hard any president tries, this last agenda is always packed. This one was no exception. Among the items, a discussion and action item related to a possible general obligation bond. First, I will report that the faculty did vote in support of the Board moving forward with a general obligation bond for the November ballot. Faculty appreciate that with this latest effort, we have had conversations that can tie a possible bond to existing plans, namely the Education Master Plan and the Facilities Master Plan. We acknowledge that a slower and more deliberate process, which has included multiple forums and a creation of a project list, has laid out a broad picture of needed improvements, some of which could be, in fact, supported with a bond. I should say, though, that the vote came after much deliberation. Let's be clear, when asked for endorsement of any sort, faculty rarely leap without looking. We ask questions, we reflect and we ponder and we ask more questions. In supporting the Board, the majority of faculty are saying, yes, we need improvements, there is no doubt, but we are also asking the Board to be mindful of any changes in voter sentiment in the wake of last October's fires. We, along with you, will be very interested in seeing where voters stand with the second survey in June. I will just conclude my remarks tonight by just commenting on the honoring of my colleagues earlier tonight. I would say that especially, we are, as a group on this campus, we are long-serving and very dedicated and as we are with our fellow constituent groups and we do, I really do enjoy this time of year and in honoring our colleagues, so thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Administrative Confidential Senate Report, Ken Arnold.
Good evening. I'm going to channel my inner Amanda here and sound just about like her in a second. So first, congratulations, Eric. Well-deserved. I think you were absolutely the right person for the college at this time. As, just like the Academic Senate, we, the Administrative Senate, Administrative Confidential Senate, we had a series of meetings regarding the project list and the impact of the project list. We met with both Bob and Ron over a couple of times, all the administrator, the administration and administrators as a group, got to take a look at it, ask questions, decide what to do. And then ours was a little bit different in the sense that we conducted an electronic poll so that people could absolutely give me whatever their candid feedback was. And after that, the Administrative Senate Confidential, or the Administrative Confidential Senate overwhelmingly supports the Board moving forward with a bond issue. So it was done in a way that people could express whatever their opinions were. I didn't receive any negative feedback on it, so, you know, basically what we ended up with is overwhelming support, which is thirty-five, thirty-five-three. So we would support you moving forward on something like that. The other thing, which is not so much related to Administrative Senate, but I just was in your packet, is the after-action report is done for the shelter and I think the Board, all the Board received their, a copy of it. We're going to bring that back to you in June for, so if you've got a little deeper dive in it, and we'll bring that back to you in June for you to take a look at and talk about the shelter. That will be right after the county has released their overall after-action report on the fires where the college is, we're a small part of it, but we'll be in there and in fact, the college is going to host the countywide release of the after-action report here on May twenty-second.
Do you have something?
Quick question. Is that, is that all day, the twenty-second?
No, it's half-day.
For, starting at early?
I believe they're going like nine to noon.
Okay, we'll go offline and get it. I just want to make sure it comes by. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Now, current and new Associate Students of Napa Valley College President Rafael Monzo.
Hi. Yes, this is the May meeting, so this is the last meeting for the, for what would count in our term because we serve a one-year term from June first to May thirty-first. So in this presidency, it is my last, but I did win reelection, so I will be returning in June, beginning that new term. Thank you for that recognition.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, well, I'll start my report by just sharing that, yes, so elections happened last, this week's Monday and Tuesday. We, I would say that it was a smaller amount of students participating on ballot, but we know of many students who simply, you know, for whatever reason, just didn't, maybe they didn't turn their packet in time or what have you, or some chose maybe perhaps to not run on ballot, but are interested in joining student government and they're in communications with us. So sometimes this is how it goes. It's a smaller group on ballot, but it really, it starts to fill out over the summer and then when fall begins as well. And throughout the year, we get several students who come in looking to fill vacancies. So, yeah, and the elections were quite a success, I would say. I've been through four of them and I think that this one ended up quite well. Let's see, next, I would like to mention, since it is, again, the kind of the finishing up for this term, for this Board, I'd like to speak about what it's been like to be the President for this, you know, this was my first presidency. I served as a Senator for three years first and then I ran for presidency and this was the conclusion of my first and I've learned so much, but I'd really like to speak more about maybe just things that I think all everyone on my Board, not just myself as President, but everyone on my Board might, might say. I can't speak for them, but I think, what I observe as a President is that, you know, there's a reality of what a student's routine is when they're members of student government. We are students just like everyone else. We take units. We maybe have jobs on the side, maybe some of us have families, actually, some of our students. And so you've got this whole other thing on this, on your plate as well, which is being a student representative. And it's a lot of work and, you know, we're expected to serve on hiring committees, send representatives to all of Napa Valley Colleges committees and provide student input and then report back to our Board. We are expected to host events. We're expected to host an office hour every week to be available to students on a consistent basis and then hold our own regular meetings where we conduct all of our official campus business. There's so much work that we're expected to do and I might point out, if you didn't know, that, you know, it's all volunteer. We don't get paid currently, only the student trustee. So it's really, I think there's so much to commend these students for who sign up for student government. Some definitely put in a lot more work than others. I think that's fair to say in any, you know, group, though, in any employment, you'll always have people who really rise to the top and those are, you know, people who naturally get recognitions because their work stands out. But really, there's, I just want to say that there's a reality, I think, every year to acknowledge when we're finishing up a term, to say that these students, they, they served a full-term, some of them, yeah, served a full-term and they, they managed it. They managed homework, they managed study time for their exams, they managed those exams, they managed serving on committees and holding meetings and their responsibilities as members of student government and it's just such a big task. And I also want to say that I think that there's a reality about what student culture is like on our campus that I think we all need to acknowledge for what it is and not live in sort of a dreamland. It would be nice if students, you know, were super engaged with their campus just inherently and they just wanted to be around and get involved with activities and clubs and campus forums, yeah, I mean, it would be so cool, but those, those things don't just happen. You know, student life, I've always said, it takes, you have to create student life. It takes time and a lot of ingenuity. So I think that that's a reality we all have to face too. And those are kind of reflections that come up for me since we're at the end of our term. I'll move right along. I need to report, I must also report on behalf of my Board tonight that the Associate Students took a vote of no confidence against our advisor, Benjamin Casada. The subject of no confidence votes, you know, is a sensitive subject to approach. It is, especially here because we are a community college and, you know, we build community here on campus. You and your colleagues, you break bread together, you form community, you get to know people, but if enough students revealed a shocking truth about someone on campus, where might you stand? You know, many of the statements that were made in the meeting by our Board members, they spoke about a serious lack of mentorship is what they felt from our advisor, as well as inappropriate behavior for someone in his position working with students. And so, and then also, we had, we took some, some public comments from alumni students, students who served on ASNBC in previous years. They came out, they heard about the agenda, they came and, and they spoke. They spoke about their experiences in the past. So there really isn't, it's, I think it's fair to say that there's a precedent here and that there's a cycle of repetition and so really, it's just in, something I have to report out to you and to say that we do not, that the Board, there was only one abstention. There was only one abstention in that vote, so it's definitely more than two-thirds and it just, it's to say that we do not feel confident in his abilities in the position. Next, I'll mention that we are, of course, expected to host the graduation reception after the commencement ceremony and we hope to see you all there. We'll have, you know, food and beverage, refreshments after that commencement ceremony. That's in planning right now. And then the last thing to say is we had to postpone our vote on the endorsement of a potential bond measure that a college, that the college would pursue. I am sorry that I couldn't, you know, that we couldn't have a definitive answer for you today. I really wanted to make it happen, but we just had no choice but to postpone. I'm really sorry. We couldn't finish our meeting as planned, so. I do apologize, but I'm calling for a meeting next week and I hope to have an answer then, but it is pre-finals week and these students, again, have a very real commitment to being students. Their studies, I mean, but I understand how important it is that all constituencies provide their feedback on a potential bond measure, so I just ask for your patience. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Classified Association Report, Jan Schart, but she is not here. So we will move on to Classified Senate Report, Michael Rayford also is not in attendance. And Faculty Association Report, Kristi Umoda, who is here?
Good evening, everybody. Of course, wanted to start out congratulating Vice President of Academic, Assistant Superintendent and Vice President of Academic Affairs, Eric Shear. I'm confident that you'll continue to the great job that you've already been doing and look forward to your continued collaboration with us. We had officers' elections, which closed on May seventh, and I regret to inform you, you're going to have another two years of me here and so forth.
Yay!
I just wanted to note our other officers who were elected. Eileen Tahada is Vice President One. Sean McCann is Vice President Two, as well as Grievance Officer. Melinda Tran is our Secretary, Merrick McKeegh, our Treasurer, and Carleen Corey is our part-time representative. We had our last meeting of the academic year today, our last general meeting with everyone, and we honored outgoing, outgoing Vice President One and former President and Negotiator Denise Friselli. We, we paid tribute to her for all of the, all of the strides that she made as Union President and her many years as Union President and we just hope to do her legacy proud. We look forward to continuing interest-based negotiations in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Napa Valley College Foundation Report, and always eager, Anne Branch.
Good evening, Board, and Eric, congratulations on your position. Your title's a little complicated, so I'll save that for later. Well, we just finished our scholarship cycle. The students have been notified and our ceremony's on May twenty-third. Right now, we're doing some of the high school ceremonies. So I went to Calistoga High the other night and it was a super good experience. We have, we awarded four students who are coming here next year and they're excellent students, so we're really excited about that. I'm running a matching gift campaign with Professor Chris Burdett, who's been here about fifty years. He, he's kicking off, well, with a twenty-five thousand dollar gift and we're looking to double that. I will put that in your packets next month. The brochures just came out. We haven't sent them out yet, so I will do that next time. We have a leadership gift with a graduate from nineteen sixty-one who gave four thousand dollars to Jump Start, so we're excited about that. I want to thank Charo, who's initiated a presentation I made to the Solano Napa Employees Advisory Committee and they awarded us four thousand dollars for scholarships for this year. And that's a new scholarship for us, so we're hoping to continue that relationship and develop that. I'm excited about that. We, the foundation has two new Board members, Laura Curtell and Graham Malkot. Graham Malkot is already a donor here. He's been a donor here for two years with an endowed scholarship, supporting foster kids and. foster kids in education. We're happy to have Laura Curtell. She's had a lot of nonprofit development experience. And my board members volunteered during the 75th festival event, so they really had a great time. Quite a few of them did. It was exciting. With the wine campaign, we've made a couple presentations to, went to Alex Ryan, who's the CEO of Duckhorn, and Tom Meadowcroft, who is an alum and proprietor of wine. And both of these people have come to us and we said, "We've heard about your wine program. We want to know what you're doing because it's so exciting." Great things about it. So, and thanks again to Bob for working with Glenna and our new bookkeeper to transition this over for our next fiscal year. So thank you.
Anne, I have a question. What time is the ceremony?
6:00 PM.
Thank you.
And yeah, people will be coming early because the presenters come early to go onstage. So it starts about 6:00. I look forward to seeing all of you there, or whoever you can make it. So thank you.
Thank you. President's Cabinet Report, 11.2. Ron?
Yeah, let's start with our newest Vice President, Eric. You have to take this heat tonight like this. This is all ours too, and then it will all settle down. But that actually starts tomorrow morning.
All right. Well, good evening. I'll keep it short here tonight because I know that we have a very long agenda here. So there's a written report that's uploaded to the board docs that you guys are welcome to peruse. I'll just hit a couple of highlights here. So first off, wanted to give you a follow-up on where we are with our dual enrollment agreement with St. Helena Unified School District. So you had approved the final MOU last month. So did the St. Helena Unified School District. So we've actually gotten those scheduled and right now, it looks like we have up to 60 students that are going to be enrolling in Math 106, which is our college algebra class, and then going on into Math 108 the following spring. So we're really excited that this is, that this has gotten off the ground and really appreciate the support of the board in moving forward with that between our two districts. And we hope that this is the first of many more partnerships to come with our local K-12 systems. Let's see, I'll also hit just really quickly here on AB 705 implementation. We've been talking about that some. We're still waiting for guidance from the Chancellor's Office for math and ESL. We did receive guidance back in April about what that's going to do. And just as a refresher, just to keep it on the front of your mind, this is the Assembly Bill that changes how students place into college-level English and math in particular. It also has to do with how they sequence their ESL courses on their way to transfer-level college courses. The basics that are changing under this are that the, any student that is declaring transfer as an intention when they apply to the college, the default will be that those students would be placed in college-level English or math, depending on their specific program that they're pursuing. That could be different courses. And then we provide additional supports around that. So it's a pretty big shift from the developmental education model that we've worked with for the last 30 years. And so this is going to be a lot of work in the coming year for the English and math departments to work through. Our faculty are ready for the challenge and we're ready to support them in going through the challenge. And then finally, I'll end up with full-time faculty hiring processes are going on right now. We have concluded, I think, seven of the, yes, seven of the hires at this point, or the hiring processes at this point. We had extraordinary pools this year, and I promised Charo that I would say that part of that was fantastic recruitment from, but we did. We had a really good process this year. We had extraordinary pools of very talented faculty come forward for all of the positions. And it's been a really, it's been a really good process. And we are finishing up, I think, in the next week or two on the remain, on the remainders. We'll be bringing those to the board in June for final approval for those positions. So we're really excited about this. We have a really good group of new faculty coming on board yet again. So thank you in advance for the support of the board on those hires.
I have a question about AB 705. So I thought that was, that we'd be using multiple measures, like especially GPA to place students, but you're saying even regardless if their goal is to transfer, regardless of the GPA, regardless of how they test, they place, they get placed in college level?
Yeah. So the language of the Assembly Bill and the interpretation of the Chancellor's Office are a little bit different. The language of the Assembly Bill from Jackie Irwin in Ventura County talks about multiple measures for placement, talks about high school GPAs as a component of placement. The direction from the Chancellor's Office has been to do that analysis for us and tell us the results of that data analysis. And the data analysis that they've conducted indicates that students should be placed immediately into transfer level with supports, varying levels of support depending on those multiple measures, but that the default should be to the immediate placement in college level.
Is that part of the guided pathways? Is that kind of connected with that or it's separate from that?
Yeah, yeah, separate from that.
Thank you.
Oscar, please.
Thank you. My report is also, I posted for you. I just want to make just one edit change. The May 3 annual job fair, I noted that we had over 40 employers. It was six employers. So the event was more successful than I thought it was. We had a lot of support from the public, as well as from students. Also, this morning, this afternoon, we had our celebrate transfer to 2018, which we had six universities here, colleges, actually eight college universities here to share information with our students, but also the opportunity for our students who are graduating, as well as those who are alumni, to come and share what experiences they've had at the universities that they've transferred to. So I was able to just sort of take a glimpse of activity because it was busy most of the morning, but from all accounts, it was very successful. One or another, just a tidbit, May 10, in all of Latin America, so from Mexico all the way to Chile, today is actually Mother's Day. So for all of you who like to be, celebrate two Mother's Days, then Happy Mother's Days to all of you as well. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
Can you tell us more about the Oscar de Haro Award?
Oh, that would, that's, this last week, I was invited, actually last week, last Friday, I was invited to return to two minutes ago college at the exile that I had there for 12 years. And it was, it was to, it was a celebrate and activity that I initiated 30 years ago, which was a youth conference. And what they've added, they've added like a new feature to it apparently, is that they've created this award in my name. And so I was very fortunate to have given this award to a counselor that I work with very closely, Jean Sterling. So it was, it was very, it was very emotional, although for the first time, I didn't cry. But it was something, something that's very special to me. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any way we can make you cry right now, you think, or no? Yeah. Because we'll keep working.
Only very cries.
Yeah. Bob, do you have something for us?
Yes, just very quickly. It's kind of a busy time in the Business and Finance Office with the planning and budget process culminating in a tentative budget. So the Planning and Budget Committee meet tomorrow to review a tentative budget for 1819. We will be presenting that tentative budget proposal to the campus community at a forum next Thursday, May 17, at 3:30 in room 2220. So I hope some of you will be able to join us at that, at that presentation. Planning and Budget Committee will then incorporate any suggestions that come from the campus community through that campus forum into the final tentative budget that will be forwarded to the president, recommended to the president, to bring, to come back to you at the June meeting for adoption. In Institutional Technology, you are seeing a technology plan tonight. And for Facilities, the Facilities Project List with project pricing is being presented to you at tonight's meeting as well.
Thank you, Bob. Charo, you have anything tonight?
Just real quick, what was the date, time and location of that meeting again?
Sure. It is a week from today, May 17, at 3:30, and it's in room 2220. And if you're not sure where 2220 is, Matt can point it out on the map.
Well done. Yeah. Charo, please.
Good evening. On April 27, we celebrated the hard work and dedication of our classified staff. We, we had a blast and I look forward to next year in celebrating the wonderful year and hard work of Classified. I want to especially thank the committee that helped coordinate the event. Scott Allen, Michelle Bullock, Carol Lee Catolica, Becky Gonzalez, Catherine Kittel, Isabel Mastafanajad, and Kim Smith. And I would also like to thank, I did see you, Trustee Minkuzel there, and I do apologize. I said hi. I should have let everyone know she's here. But thank you.
I have a photo, by the way.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Moving on, we will not, no, 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 no. I want to also take the opportunity to thank the faculty in both the Academic Senate, as well as the Faculty Association, and wish all of our colleagues on the faculty ranks, thank you, first of all, for your creative and hard work in the classroom. And you have a much well-deserved summer break coming up. Enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we are on to Public Information Officer. Doug Ernst is out tonight, so Carol Lee is taking that role.
Yeah. Hi. Doug sends his regrets. His daughter's graduating from USC, so congratulations, Doug. In addition to the Clipping Service Report, that I'm sure you've all studied, Doug asked me to share a summary of the Speakers Bureau presentations. So we have the completed-to-date, which is quite impressive, and thank you to everybody who's participated. These are the upcoming Speakers Bureau presentations. And these are pending scheduling, but likely to also occur in the next couple of months. We also wanted to share with you sort of a reflective video on our wonderful open-house event on April 14, where the entire campus really came together and did us proud in the community. And we showed off our programs. We showed off our friendly hospitality. And we showed off the high regard of elected officials that were here. So let me just play this for you.
Napa Valley College really opened my eyes to the wonderful opportunities that education lends.
Let me find the volume on this machine. Yeah, I think this is maxed.
Napa Valley College really opened my eyes to the wonderful opportunities that education lends folks. And from here, I went on, transferred to a four-year school, and got all my appropriate degrees. But I can honestly tell you, if it weren't for Napa Valley College, most certainly wouldn't be where I am now, but my life would have looked a lot different. This campus and the people that make this campus great really helped me a lot. The opportunities that community college afford individuals is remarkable. So thank you for everything you've done for the last 75 years, and I'm looking forward to 75 more years.
Well, the link is included in your president's report and we can certainly send it out.
We can put it on Newsroom as well, I think, huh?
Yes, absolutely. We'll put it out in the world.
Thank you, Carol Lee. My report has been largely poached, but let me, let me just draw a couple of things here. One, I do want to talk about the 75th. I'll go out of order here a little bit, but the 75th was remarkable. It's the second item there. The estimates that we had were about 3,500 people. It was crowded all day. A really wonderful inquiry. I think the surprise for many was the, there was so many alumni and past, past students on campus who were really introducing their kids and also their parents. Just wonderful. So, and all across the board, I believe, Carol Lee, I'll have to double check on this, we had a couple hundred volunteers. Is that correct? Somewhere in there?
We had nearly 300 volunteers.
300 volunteers. I knew it must be good if you were getting up to say. Yes, and the college really came together in a great way. It was, it was wonderful to celebrate this. And we'll continue the 75th year all the way through our culminating event at July 4, where we will have a parade of astronomical proportions. So that will be a wonderful, a wonderful culmination of the 75th year. I did start, if you can go up, with a hospitality symposium. I was lucky enough to be invited and also got to speak there. Charlie and Diana are in the audience tonight. And it really was a quite extraordinary event. And I would just lean on you, either one of you, Charlie or Diana, just to speak a couple minutes about it. Yeah, they're both fighting now, just to get up there and talk. The extraordinary piece is the, while Diana's coming up, is the partnership, both in the valley, between the Vintners, a host of hospitality and restaurateurs and culinary, and the college. And I think your team, Diana, just deserves all, great kudos for that.
Yeah, certainly my team does. I just say yes, and then they do tons of work. And it really was a beautiful day. It was, the location was very nice. Charlie and Claudette and Merrick worked really hard with the Vintner team. And the workshops were excellent. I actually went to a Google, Google, what'd she call it? Google Tools for looking at data on Google with Google Tools with Claudette, which was absolutely fascinating. The keynote, again, was, I always say his name wrong.
Dragoo.
Dragoo, yes. Dragoo. Stellar job. The audience had very positive things to say. The food was, again, just fabulous. It really could not have been better. I think it was a fabulous partnership and the, our team and the Vintners worked very well together. And we're hoping for more wonderful events.
Yeah, I thought that the key for me was that the Vintners were doing their own kind of boot camp piece, and Charlie and team had been doing, along with Michelle and many other people in the, in the college, have been doing this hospitality symposium. So it made great sense. The really wonderful piece for me personally, in talking to the Vintners, is there's a very, very close and cordial working relationship that we've worked very hard to build over the past few years. And we are there. We are absolutely at the table and they feel remarkably welcome at ours, too. So it was, good kudos on that. Thank you. I would, I'd like to come back to the high school breakfast. There is a picture of that. One of the great things that occurred is the new event coordination. I'll give, you know, shout-outs to Michelle, who's over there, the Dean of ARA, and Matt Cowell, who are making the Performing Arts Center, especially the lobby. Help me with the name, please. The Paul Ash Lobby, thank you so much. It just escaped me for a moment, which was a wonderful gift. As you can see there, it's being used more and more. It's in high demand. And we are accomplishing more outreach there. So we've had several pieces there. I think, Oscar, I think I put in here that we had 79 representatives from all over.
Yes, correct. Actually, it's close to about 81, but yes.
Eighty-one, but not counting, right? That's good. Yeah. Very successful. Again, outreach piece becoming more and more successful, and we're very excited about that as well. Classified Luncheon was there. The last thing I thought was... The last thing I thought was really wonderful, and I think Charlie did the classified luncheon. I would say that it's great to see that our classified staff, our professional staff, are valued, and that they feel that way as well. Mike Raferd shared with me he was ready and wanting to come tonight to also talk about their support and endorsement, but he was unable to make tonight, so he'll save that for next month. The final piece here?
Can I add that Charlie just did a fabulous job hosting, or whatever that role was, in costume and everything, and games that they were playing, and embarrassing people whenever she had a chance, but everybody had fun, and it was a great event. You did a really, really good job.
She did.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. The Girls in Robotics Leadership CSTEM Camp is very exciting. As part of the outreach, again, Napa Valley College is becoming, I think, the hub for many of the activities in the entire county. This is a piece that the CSTEM camp is kind of focused through, as you can see here, UC Davis, Napa Valley College will hope that, will host this, and Napa Learns, I'm on that board, all funded to really encourage innovation, technology in the county. We are one of the only counties in California and farther, really, that has a fully integrated relationship with all of our superintendents, and an outside 501(c)(3) that encourages that participation. So, it's really a remarkable piece here. So, I'm excited. At last count, they still had some openings for this camp. So, if you know girls who are entering 7th and 8th and would be interested in this fantastic camp, please contact my office or Napa Learns directly, and they can get in there. There's just an update on the Chancellor's Office recommendation on funding. We'll fully, we'll have a more complete piece of this, and Bob's going to come back next month to talk, but there's a link there for you. And there's some selected things that I have done, as I always put in there. There are 30 or 40 kind of events. The key here is to connect with the community, and we're certainly doing that. So, with that, that is all of mine. Thank you.
To 12.1, approval of minutes. Is there any discussion or questions on minutes? Seeing none, minutes approved. We're to 13.1, bond feasibility project list for a facilities master plan, and I do have a couple of speaker cards there. Jack Ray.
Jack Ray, and I'm a director for Napa County Taxpayers Association. I've talked to you before about the bond measure that isn't a bond measure yet, but we fully anticipate it getting there. And I guess want to say, I've campaigned against your previous bond measure, which did not pass. This one, the polling looks worse than the previous one, and I don't know why you do not believe the votes. You're going to go for another poll yet. But, I would be interested in seeing the college win one in a row. And what I'm talking about is having a bond measure that you can be successful on, and that's a smaller measure with a unified project or two with a cost estimate, and one you feel you can handle within that cost estimate and make it happen, and make it happen successfully. Because right now, you don't have credibility, and the only way you build credibility is to win one. And so, that's my advice. Try and win one by going for a smaller amount of dollars from the taxpayers on something that you can handle and be successful at. I had one other thing, this was sort of off the cuff, but some of you may have got this. I think it went out to most people, your 75th mailer that went out to the county. On the address side, this is addressed to all your people in the county, it's interesting because it talks about priorities identified, and it's sort of like polling. You have five priorities identified on here. I would suggest you give those to a high school student to see how their reading and comprehension is, because it's not five. It's three. Just have a look at it. Thanks.
Thank you. Leon Braunig.
I wanted to talk to you about the bond and the costs that you've come up with. First thing is, as I could mirror what Jack said, I can't even imagine that you're going for a bond with the failed polling that you have. And if you look back at the polling for the last three elections, those definitely yes votes have declined each time, and the definitely no votes have increased each time. So, I don't know why you're going for another polling, and don't just look back at what you've had. And I would mirror, again, what Jack said. We have said before, if you were to win one, a small bond, do one project, do it right for once, and then come back for more things that you need. Right now, the bond situation is really complex. I'm on the Measure H, Napa Valley Unified School District Oversight Committee, and they reported yesterday a loss of $71 million of their bond money to cost overruns. Pretty reminiscent of your measure, Ann, when you lost 70 million. And it's because failed planning, and also because of escalating costs. We don't know of anyone here in this college who has ever managed a $280 million school bond, either the construction side of it or the financing side of it. And that is a recipe for disaster, and we're seeing it right now at Napa Valley Unified because Don Evans had to back away for his health. And we saw it with your bond in 2007, when the news report showed that you lost 70 million bucks. You know, and when a school loses 70 million dollars of a school bond, it doesn't just fly away. Taxpayers have to pay that money for the next 40 years, and they don't get the promised projects that you offered in your election. You're talking about $280 million bond, I think you are. That's what has been in the past. What do you think you could, to build with a $280 million bond? I can tell you, the Luxury Archer Hotel that just opened in Napa, 184,000 square feet, built it for $380 a square foot. Your $280 million would build four of them. The Wine Train plans a 348,000-square-foot, five-story resort for just $100 million. Satui's Castello Amarosa has 121,000 square feet. Your 280 million could build seven of those. So, I'm talking about value. Are you giving the taxpayers the value for what you're offering? And so, using the cost of $330 a square foot, which is what the commercial construction is right now, Napa Valley College should be able to entirely rebuild its 510,000-square-foot of buildings for only $168,000, a million dollars. It's easy to lose a million here and there. And you'd be saving taxpayers $112 million. So, I hope that with your costing, that you'll be in the $380 a square foot, because that's what the commercial construction is these days. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Orton.
I live in Napa, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have a number of questions, and when you're making a decision like this, there's scant description of the analysis that was given to come up with this. So, if I were sitting in your seat, I would be asking, what prioritization has been made of the listed projects? For example, one way to prioritize, similarly done by the Chancellor's Office, or state-funded, would be to figure out which ones, which of the projects are for health and safety, and rank those according to the number of people that we potentially threatened. Another way in the list would be, which are the uses of, for instructional space, either new or modernization? That's the way the Chancellor's Office does. And then, how about then the reconstruction or new construction of space to promote non-instructional uses, but that are integral to the campus, and ranked by age. There's no whatsoever any prioritization. What, they're all equal rank? That's hard to believe. It is really hard to believe. All of a sudden, we get, boom, $298,000 worth of projects. Whoa. It's hard to, yeah, there ought to be some prioritization that would help you make your decision. The second point, in compiling the estimated costs of the listed projects, have elements been identified which comprise the definition of total cost of ownership? And have those elements been used when making this recommendation? Accreditation Standard 3B4 requires long-range capital plans, support institutional improvement goals, and reflect projections of the total cost of ownership of new facilities and equipment. These are the accreditation standards. In evaluating whether the district has complied with this standard, the accreditors will examine whether the district has identified elements which comprise the definition of total cost of ownership, and has used that when making decisions about facilities and equipment. Before the board makes a decision about whether to go forward on this long-range plan, board members need to be satisfied that the district has used the total cost of ownership, and that the list reflects that total cost of ownership. If this list does reflect the total cost of ownership, the board should be asking the question, how was that accomplished, and how is it so reflected in these estimated numbers? I mean, you get to ask questions. You know, you ought to be a little inquisitive about that. The accreditor will be asking those questions later. Number three, before proceeding with any recommendation for financing improvements, these improvements, the board must be assured that each of the projects, as estimated, will comply with CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. Please describe the CEQA process. Will staff give the board assurance that no major environmental study will be required that might drastically change the estimates? That's one thing that could cause a $70 million hole. And this is especially important for projects planned for the currently undeveloped areas of the campus. Big unknowns out there as to the environmental consequences. So, those are questions you ought to be asking before you drink the Kool-Aid here. Thank you.
Thank you. James Hinton.
Good evening again, James Hinton. You know, some of the previous speakers have pointed out some great points about, for example, Leon Braunig, about what you can build with $280 million. I don't understand why you need $280 million, and there's some things you should ponder. I've been studying the Civic Center that Napa is trying to build, and Donald Trump has put tariffs on steel. That makes construction costs go up. There was a fire a few months ago that burned a lot of houses. So, contractors are getting paid enormous amounts of money to build custom homes all over this area, and people are paying like $700 a square foot. And so, they need workers, and there's a lot of workers that are going to be building homes for the next several years throughout our region, building the Civic Center if they go through with it. And construction costs right now are at an all-time high, and it's hard, even if you're doing prevailing wage work, it's going to be hard to get this right now. So, are you taking into consideration this post-fire cost and the new tariffs? That's really something you got to, because, you know, we're going to be paying interest on all this, you know, for the expense of steel, for the expense of labor, if we can get it. Very rarely do you ever, these always run over, and you probably won't finish half the projects you start on it. And like the previous speaker said, what projects are most important? What's the first ones you're going to prioritize? Is the sky falling at Napa Valley College? I don't see it. I mean, I went into a debate, it was a beautiful building over there. This is a marvelous facility. I've taken classes out here, so I'm not sure what the need is for $280 million right now.
Any further public comment on this item 13.1?
Sorry, I turned my microphone off. Thank you, speakers. Are there any other, anyone else that wants to speak on 13.1? Okay, we'll close public comment on 13.1, and then we'll turn it over to...
Yeah, Bob and I, we'll go over to the podium like we did last time, and I think we have, is that PowerPoint loaded up?
Do you have a PowerPoint loaded?
He wanted to do survey first.
Yeah, let's just do that. We're building on the slide deck to kind of review for you just really quickly. This was the history of the publicly funded facilities improvements. '42 was a bond, and then '62, 2002, we started building these other pieces. Out through, out through the spring of 2017, when we started talking more in earnest here. Governing Board considers a potential funding mechanisms for the growing facilities in the spring. The summer of '17, the master plan was updated, and the bond feasibility started to become a more realistic process, I guess is the way I want to say it. Community polling and engagement began. Campus engagement began in fall of '17, and we've shared much of this material, or all this material so far. That fall, campus feedback was a series of invitations mailed to staff and students, and we've already reported most of those out to you. And we had, this campus feedback is what we've been talking about before. This was alignment of priorities that the initial poll identified with likely voters, and then trying to compare that with the interest of our folks here on campus. And as you can see, there is an alignment there. In the spring, so we're kind of bringing ourselves up to speed now, we issued community feedback survey and starting to get some alignment and priorities. It looks like 344 responses are received, ranking based on 220 responses entered to date, and this was a different scale here. It's one to five, so the scale is a little bit different. These rank almost exactly the same. So, if you were out there looking at repairing and upgrading vocational classrooms, how important do you feel that is of those respondents who came back in? They thought it was kind of an important item. In other words, they didn't think that it was the number-one item or number-five item, but they're prioritizing most things, right, as you could see, needing attention. The spring campus engagement, we did a webpage and survey. This is ongoing. We're gathering groups, information at the main campus. Those forums are listed there. Upper Valley Campus had some, we've had some here. We've had... are listed there. Upper Valley Campus had some. We've had some here. We've had campus information presentations at all of the senates and several of the division-level meetings. Facilities and potential needs lists in March, April, May. The summer and spring, so here we are, we're continuing the Speakers Bureau presentations, inviting surveys to local, taking the same kind of feedback we're getting tonight, which is, you know, copious notes. Take, listen, understand what the objections might be, or, or eliminate those that are, that are not real, and verify those ones that are real, and then move forward to address those. The board chair hosted a listening sessions, along with myself, a couple, not, not very well attended. But those who did attend had serious and wonderful things to share. And it was another opportunity for our internal constituencies to reach out directly to myself and the board chair. Information mailers going out, follow-up independent opinion poll. You'll see this later tonight. I, I think that we, the normal course of events for bond measures that are well thought out, well, well-planned, is to do an, an initial look at the community, see what the, see what the community is thinking, and then to follow up later in, in whatever cycle you've established. Ours happened to be a, more than a year, and, and recheck that informational piece. So we're going out to do that. Next steps, board presentations. It gets very real, as we talked about last time. Ongoing engagement of facilities master plan. Bob's going to talk to you at length about the project list tonight, which you'll, you'll see, and you can ask some questions, those construction estimates. There's a tentative workshop on bond process by bond council. It depends on how your discussion goes, but you may want to consider board having a special, another meeting in June to just talk more in-depth. Obviously, an open session, fully, you know, available meeting. But it would give you a chance to have a one-topic deep dive, if you will. And you can think about that. And then, board action tentative. It's their tentative because there are so many factors. Consider the adoption of a bond project list, which is different than the, the overarching project list, construction cost estimates, talk about TCO, and all the things that you would like to talk about. And then there's a resolution calling for that bond that you would have to put on the ballot, and that would happen in July. I think that is, yeah, that's this. So with that, Bob's going to address the, the project list, and talk about what it, what it is, what it is not, how it does address these things, and, and see it in the light of what it is, a strong piece of information, building on other pieces of information, and hopefully, we can all address it together.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what you're seeing here tonight is the proposed project list that was presented to you last month, with just a couple of minor changes. The pricing is not a minor change. But there were a few, there were a few typographical errors in the first one. We had DSPS listed twice for building 1100, and so, just clean those things up. But the primary difference between what you saw last month and what you're seeing tonight are the estimated prices for the projects. Now, a new version of this list was posted this afternoon, and I just want to point out to you the difference between what was in the original packet and the new version. And it's only one item, and that has to do with the viticulture and winery technology building. And because that is one structure, one building, where a funding source has been identified, and that funding source would be fundraising through the Napa Valley College Foundation. We added to this slide the note that says, this project is currently projected to be privately funded. And if you look at the summary sheet at the end, which lists the pricing for all of the projects, that footnote appears there as well for the VWT building. Other than that, this is exactly what was posted when the agenda was posted on Monday. So, the projects that are new construction, so the 1100 building, the 200 building, the VWT building, the 2200 building, those cost estimates came from us, from architects with whom we consulted when we were looking at total square footage that would be needed for these buildings, and what it would cost to construct those buildings. So what you see here, total project costs for the 1100 building, that came from the architect firm that we worked with. What you see here for viticulture and winery technology, different architecture firm. The firm was selected by the Napa Valley College Foundation, but the same thing in terms of where that project cost number came from. If we look at the 200 building, again, new construction, the, the size of that building, the square footage for that building was determined through meetings with constituent groups here on campus, and the architect came up with that project cost. When you look at repairing and upgrading existing buildings, that pricing came from information that we received from the State Chancellor's Office, having to do with upgrades and improvements to existing facilities. We also factored in to those estimates a cost escalator, assuming that some of the projects would be done early in the bond project, others would be done later. So we priced them all with the assumption that they would be in the middle of bond construction. At this point, other than the fact that the 200 building would be most likely the first building to be constructed, followed by the movement of the 2200s to allow for the construction. So remember, I'm sorry, I talk about this so much. Let me take a step back. The 200 building, which would go in between the North Gym and the Performing Arts Center, so there's an empty space there, that was space that was cleared in the previous bond project, and so that space is ready for construction. That space, that building, that 200 building is also where we would construct large-format classrooms. And so, construction of the large-format classrooms allows us to do two things. Most importantly, it allows us to move classes out of the 2200s, which are the portables, bungalows, relocatables, whatever term you want to use for them. Because that's where the new science laboratory building is going. That's the 2200 building. So those first two buildings in the, in the sequence would be addressing the needs that were outlined in the educational master plan and in the facilities master plan, that we need additional, we, we need better instructional space, and we need additional science labs. In order for us to move forward with the renovations in other existing buildings, we need that classroom space. So for example, for us to renovate the 1400 building, that's eight classrooms currently. We need a space for those classes to take place. In order for us to do the 1600 building, again, eight classrooms, we need space for that instruction to take place. So what you see here in terms of total project cost for the 800 building, it's the, the upgrades and improvements. There are also a few significant things that are happening in the 800 building. Creating an additional nursing skills lab, which would require us to reconfigure some of the spaces in that building. So it's a little more than just doing some standard upgrades in that building. The 1100, the 1000 building, Criminal Justice Training Center and Facility Offices, again, that project cost is based on a, a State Chancellor's Office estimate with a cost escalator in there. And you'll see that for most of the buildings that are existing buildings, buildings on campus, you, you see things like upgrading air handling units, electrical systems, plumbing, things of that nature. The 3100 building, a little more complicated. That's the machine tool and welding building. And so, not only is that upgrading the space, but it's also expanding the lab space and reconfiguring the classrooms. So a little more than just upgrades. The 1400 building, I'm sorry.
Bob, can I ask, can I ask a quick question on that one?
Sure.
Does that, does that create a need for the equipment to also change in any way? Or are we just moving equipment into that new space?
So to the extent that the current equipment is, is adequate and meets current standards, we would move equipment over. We have been replacing equipment in welding and machine tool over the years, and so it wouldn't require a total replacement of all of the equipment.
Okay, thank you.
The 1400 building, the 1600 building are fairly simple renovations, but the one thing that will happen when we renovate those buildings, remember, those are classroom buildings, and each of those buildings has eight classrooms. When we renovate those buildings, we will lose classroom numbers, because current standards and current, the way that we currently utilize classroom space requires more square footage per student than those classrooms currently allow us. So that, you know, for example, if you were to look at one of the classrooms in the 1600 building, you might see 40 tablet-armed chairs in there. In order to make those rooms better instructional spaces, we need more space, and we need better, better furnishings that, that better suit the needs of instruction. So chances are, at the end of the day, when we renovate those buildings, we will have six classrooms in each of those buildings, rather than eight classrooms in each of those buildings. The 2200 building is the other, the final new building, in, in terms of new construction. Again, that's the science laboratory building, the physical sciences laboratory building. It will also include some large-format classroom space as well. And so, that will go in the footprint where the current 2200 series of buildings is located. The 100 building, which is the Performing Arts Center, so you see the, the most significant expenses there are replacing the wireless microphones, upgrading and modernizing the audio system and the speaker system. Now, we have been maintaining the facility, but there's a change, and we talked about this last month, there's a change coming to the frequencies that you use, and I wish Matt Cowell was here, because I'm sure I'm not expressing this very well. But there's a change to the frequencies that we use, and it, it has to do with interference with emergency signals or emergency services. If we continue to use the audio system that we have there, we will not be compliant with the new regulations. So that's really what that is talking about.
Is that the same thing with the microphones, the wireless microphones?
Yes.
They interfere with that?
It all has to be, it all has to be upgraded in order for the system to not be in conflict with emergency signals. This, the North Gym, we talked about this. This is really just connecting a walkway between the 400 building and the new 200 building. So that's the only thing that's listed for that. The gymnasium, that's a fairly significant project, and that's because there are a number of upgrades that need to be done to that building. There are spaces in that building that were designed for the way that building was used in the 1960s. And so, there is space that is underutilized in that building, and by doing renovations and improvements to that building, we could recapture some of that space for better uses. The other thing that you see here are field improvements. So they're connected with the, the renovations to the 600 building. 1200 building, little theater, again, not currently being utilized as performance space, and so reconfiguring that space to meet our current needs. The 1600 building, we talked about that, very similar to what would be happening in the 1400 building.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Just real quick, could we go back to the gymnasium?
Yes.
On the list of the bullet points, what's like the list of precedence? Like, what would be done first versus, and what's the order? I mean, is there an order yet? I mean, how far along are we on that? I mean, I see field improvements personally as a bigger issue than some of the other things.
Well, and I would say that in this particular case, they're independent. So, you know, for example, once you start renovating the locker rooms and renovating the classrooms in the building, you're kind of doing the whole building. But the building doesn't have to be done in order to do the field improvements, and similarly, you can be doing the field improvements while the building is being renovated, or before the renovations start on the building. So they're lumped together because they are related in that they're all for physical education and athletics, but they are independent projects in terms of when they can be done.
Since we went back, just really quick about the, the pack and the audio system and the microphones. So at this point, there isn't, as I know, Dr. Kraft's been talking about how that's, that facility's been very well-used and rented out, and I'm just wondering, so there isn't enough money in, from the proceeds of the rental of the pack to pay for that?
There's, there are certainly not, let me go back to that, there's certainly not $1.3 million to do that. The 1800 building, so the 1800 building is where the chemistry and physics and geography and geology labs currently are. Did I leave anything out? Okay. So, and so, they would be moving to the new 2200 building, and so this allows us to repurpose that space and renovate that space. The 1300 building, when we construct the Student Center, then that opens up space in the 1300 building, and that would allow us to relocate SBDC, EWD, and CTE, and it would also allow us to relocate some operations that are currently in the 1500 building. Then, that's the building we're in right now, the 1500 building. In the 1500 building, if we move certain functions out of that, out of this building, that gives us some additional space here. And the main thing that we want to do here is to consolidate IT operations, because right now, we have IT separated on, on two separate floors in this building. So to bring them all together. McCarthy Library, there will be some movement out of the McCarthy Library, once the Student Center is constructed. The Placement and Tutoring Center, the DSPS operations will move out of there. And so, it allows us to move some new operations into the 1700 building. Quite honestly, probably the biggest thing that we would be looking at would be to utilize that space for additional faculty office space. If you've been to the 1000 building, you might see that the faculty offices in the 1000 building are very small. It's, it's almost impossible for a faculty member to meet with a student in those offices. And so, it'll allow us to free up some space in the 1000 building to do renovations there as well. The 3300 building, which is currently where EWD, SBDC, and CTE are located, we would move campus police operations into that building. Campus police and student health are currently in one of the 2200 portables. And so, we'd move campus police into this building, and student health would go into the new Student Center. The Visual Arts Center, there was a, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, quick question.
Yeah.
So, student health. Moving that, would that allow us to be able to provide more services? Is there a gain in our services that we could provide there?
Well, it's certainly, and Oscar, this is probably more of a question for you.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the idea. Currently, what we have, we have certification rooms, and, but unfortunately, one of those rooms has to be used for, for the services. So the idea would be to, to expand. So the idea would be to, to expand the ability of, of, of exam rooms as well as, as, as space. Because currently living in a modular is, is really limited space. We also, because as you know, that we, we've hired on, on, on a contract, MOU, we hired someone from, from Mantis to provide the mental health services. So, but we can't place that person there because there's, there's no space. So the idea would be to expand the services that students need in one location. So yes.
After hearing the two women this afternoon, you know, that are this evening, that talked about the services that they were getting and how great they were, I was just curious if, you know, because we, obviously, that would be a great service to provide. So, thank you.
Okay, I think I'm almost done. The thirty-nine hundreds and the four thousands, that's where the digital R program, or what we refer to as the MacLab, DDDGT, and the facilities operations are. And so that would be just general upgrades to those buildings. Child Development Center, again, general upgrades to those buildings. Upper Valley Campus, upgrades to that building and making it, making some renovations or doing some renovations to that building that would make it meet current needs for education in St. Helena and, and address the needs of our community education program and our continuing education program up there. South Valley Campus at American Canyon High School, that's just saying, are we able to do a few things down there that would give us some additional space and upgrade that space? Yes.
I have a question about that. I asked Dr. Kraft at the last meeting if NVUSD was on board with this plan for us to construct more office space, and kind of seemed unsure. And so I'm just wondering about that again. And then I'm also wondering just if we use our bond money to construct on their campus, who owns those buildings? And is it appropriate to spend bond money on somebody else's land for the college?
So it's similar to what, and, and Dr. Kraft might be better at answering this question, but it's similar to what happened when those classrooms were originally constructed. So it was a partnership with NVUSD. And we put funds in to assist in that construction with the understanding that those classrooms would be a dedicated space for Napa Valley College, am I?
That's right.
Okay.
So they've said that if we build office space, that that, we will own those, that office space forever? That's what they've said?
Well, I would use a different reflection. We would have, rather than own, we would have the usage of that by, by MOU for whatever that period of time is that we agreed on.
Who would own them?
Own them. The, the NVUSD owns the property. We have the rights to those three classrooms and those office spaces. As far as I can tell, I, through, I think it was a fifty-year agreement or forty-nine year agreement. And we can, we certainly have that document, you know? If you'd like to see it, it's easy to get.
So they've agreed to the additional office space?
No, we haven't had this, this is our conversation. We're talking about reconfiguring one of our existing classrooms down there to provide more student support services as well.
Okay, okay, so we still need to get them on board with the additional office space? If we get a bond and get it approved, we'd need to still get them on board for the additional office space?
Yes, we certainly, Oscar and I have met with those, certainly administrators on site. I've talked with the superintendent and the associate superintendent of NVUSD, and they're both on board with this. So we're all in very close contact on it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mount Vitor Farm at Bumpy Camp, we talked about the need to do some upgrades and improvements at, at that facility. Campus-wide projects, a total of forty-three point six million dollars. This is where we upgrade the IT infrastructure, we improve the green belt, we upgrade our utility infrastructure for gas, water, sewer, stormwater, and electricity. We create a roadway connector to Gas or Drive. And just to be clear, yes, that is included in the forty-three million dollars. That doesn't mean that a bond would construct that roadway connector. It just means that that is one of the things that the college is looking at as an improvement to our circulation on campus and access to areas on campus like the athletic fields. We know that we have to upgrade and improve our campus walkways, replacing the trees, the light poles, the planner boxes, and covering the transit mall. And then we have the opportunity to install solar on a couple of our parking lots, which would reduce our carbon footprint and net fourteen point eight million dollars in savings over a twenty-five year period. So this is the grand total. Notice, there is that note that was added this afternoon that says the VWT project is currently projected to be privately funded. Now, this is a project list, it is not a bond list. And so just as the VWT building will be constructed with funds that would not come from a bond, there are other funding sources that could be used for some of these projects. For example, some of our older buildings on campus, the fourteen hundred, sixteen hundred, eighteen hundred building could qualify for state matching funds. We have local capital improvement funds that we can use. There are some things in the projects for our older buildings that would be covered through scheduled maintenance money that we receive and that we set aside each year. So this is a compilation of everything that we need to do, want to do, to improve the, the campus and improve the instructional environment.
Mr. Baldini.
Thank you. The eleven hundred building, new construction, the total project cost, sixty-four million. That is, is that separate or part, excuse me, of that total sixty-four and a half million, what percentage of that is the actual building cost? Meaning, is, is that number included moving existing offices and people into a temporary facility and rehabbing that? So if you accommodate that usage, new usage, and then addressing the actual building construction, are you moving it all back in, the furnishing? Or is it just the construction cost?
So it is the construction cost, the furnishing cost, the moving back into the building cost. It does not include swing space. And so if, if, if I'm following, so, right. So, so if we're talking about, there, there are three areas, because the thirteen hundred building remains in existence while the eleven hundred building is being constructed. So the folks who are in existing buildings like the thirteen hundred building, like the math success center and the writing success center, that are in the eight hundred building, the DSPS folks who are in the seventeen hundred building, they stay where they are until that building is completed, and then they move into that building. In terms of swing space, we would need to find swing space for the bookstore, because that area of the nine hundred building would be incorporated into the new eleven hundred building. And then for financial aid, EOPS, and the talent search. Oscar, am I leaving somebody out from the eleven hundred building? Is that it? So those are the areas that we would need to identify swing space for.
Trustee Beck.
A follow-up question on that, because I had also written something similar. Is the cost of swi, of, of procuring and moving and all of that for swing space factored into all of these different things? Or is that something that needs to be included separately?
It's really only the construction of the eleven hundred building that would, that would require us to locate swing space. When we renovate the fourteen hundred building, for example, those classes would move to other classroom space on campus. So it, it might be a bit of a challenge for the scheduling office to schedule all of those classes and other spaces. But we wouldn't be renting additional relocatables or portables to do that. So it really is just, with, with the exception of the eleven hundred building, there isn't really a need to identify swing space in any of these other projects.
I have one more follow-up. So back to the eleven hundred building, so that total project cost, sixty-four, four fifty-six, seven seventy-three. What did you use as a, a, a projected start date? So the, we agree to a bond, bond measure passes, the bonds are then sold on the market, that money is accrued, and we could, when are we shovel-ready? And then, you know, when are you projecting? So how are these, these costs are escalated over the life of the building construction? Or just specifically, are they here and now?
Right. So the eleven hundred building is one of the buildings that the architects who we engaged, they're the ones who came up with that, that cost estimate and determined when that would start. And I think Matt is better prepared to answer that question.
Only because I think I remember the, the information from the sheet. So what they did is, is they factored midpoint of construction for that project, I believe in twenty-twenty-three, was kind of the midpoint on that particular one. So we, we had conversations about what logical sequencing, given the swing space issue and some of the other things. So we tried to, on the new construction, land those on a bit of a calendar. And that's my recollection for that building.
Trustee Martinson.
So, so last time I asked, you know, the, the plan, if it's fully realized, how much it would increase the footprint of the college, by how many square feet? Do, do we know that?
We, we do. The, the total increase for assignable square foot, and I'll, I'll use net because some buildings are going away, as Bob mentioned. So the net assignable square footage would just be over an addition of about sixty thousand square feet. So one of the things that we would realize is four more classrooms on campus, we would realize six more labs, and then approximately forty offices. So what we're getting for that, as Bob mentioned, is, is the, the quality of instruction that we're able to deliver with a little bit more square footage. All of the older buildings and the standard that the chancellor's office used, going back into the sixties, was fifteen square feet per student. And I've mentioned that before. That's a very small footprint. Since I've been here at the college, we've increased the size of the student desks twice. I hope this is it, but, so our population has grown, and I think we've all seen that. So the other thing is, is delivery of instruction, there's a lot more tables and chairs, there's an interest in getting into small groups and things. So by increasing our square footage in our classrooms and making them a little bit larger, we're able to deliver instruction to the same number of students essentially that we're doing now. On the office realm, one of the things that I wanted to mention is, Bob pointed out that in the thousand building, for example, that the offices are very small. The same is true in the eight hundred building where the nursing faculty are. In the eighteen hundred building, we have offices where four science instructors are sharing a space. Another office, it's three instructors. So in this, we're allowing enough space for the faculty to have an individual office, have enough room to meet with students. And then the other thing that we're doing is, we're allowing for more office space for adjunct faculty. That's one of the real shortages that we have. I think from my perspective, that affects our ability to keep and retain, or hire and retain adjunct faculty. And so I see that as a positive thing for the faculty side of things.
Just a follow-up, kind of related to that. So we've talked before about maintenance is already a concern right now, and we're increasing the square footage by quite a lot. Have, have we figured out, or will we figure out, the total cost of ownership? Is that coming down the road?
That certainly will be coming down the road, and we've been having conversations about that, both as it relates to the existing facilities that we have as well as the new ones, yes.
So when will that come to the board, that kind of information?
I would say it will be trickling in over the next three months, would be one way to say it, so.
Thank you.
Trustee Rios.
Thank you. A couple of questions. One, Bob, you said this is a list of kind of a total project list, not a bond project list. How do we get from this to a bond project list? And the other part of the question is, you, you also mentioned these other potential matching funds or maintenance funds. So when and how do we determine if we can get those or not to factor that into the money we need?
So that's actually the next step in this process. So now that we've identified the total cost of all of the projects, our next step is to go through this project list and determine what are the most likely projects to be funded if we decide to go for a bond, to be funded through a bond? Which are the projects that could be funded from some of these other sources of funding? And if we do that, what would the timing be? So for example, if, if we were to, if we were to look to the state for matching funds, there's a, there's an amount of time that it takes to do that. And we are limited to renovating existing older buildings. So, you know, as we look at the list, the fourteen hundred building, the sixteen hundred building, and the eighteen hundred buildings are really probably the only candidates. Oh, and thirty-one hundred possibly. The only candidates that would potentially qualify for that. So looking at the timing of those funding sources, the likelihood of those funding sources, looking at our capital project money that we have set aside right now, we have over two million dollars in capital project money. What can that do for us? Looking at our scheduled maintenance funds that come in every year, and we're setting aside scheduled maintenance funds every year. So what is on the list of things to be done to the six hundred building that could potentially be accomplished through scheduled maintenance funds and would pull something off of, off of that list? So that's the homework that we'll be doing for the next four weeks, looking at those potential funding sources.
Thank you.
Trustee Iverson.
Just one quick question, following up on Trustee Rios's question. Kind of pulling out what would be on the bond project list versus this total list in its entirety? That could be done by midterm elections, is the idea, possibly? I mean, when, when would we be making that decision?
So we, we're talking about June fourth? But when you say midterm elections, where, are we talking about the June?
November elections.
Well, so we would have to make that determination before you vote in July. I mean, we, we would have to make that determination, because that's an essential element of any potential bond measure that would go on the November election.
So would it be helpful, or maybe you've already done this, to have it broken down in, you know, instruction bucket, repair bucket, technology bucket?
We actually have, pretty much have that. I mean, you don't see it here, but that's how we came up with those numbers.
Okay. 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 Any other new questions? Manfair.
Have you heard of the twentieth annual college construction report? Have you ever heard of that report?
I am not aware of that report.
I came across this from Trustee Baldini. And the source it's from is from Dum and Brad Street, is the firm that got the data. And in this, it has the construction costs by type of building. And this data was from twenty-fourteen through twenty-fifteen. And for example, a student services building, the highest quartile per square foot cost was five hundred and thirty dollars. And for us, for the eleven hundred, it came, it came to one thousand fifty-five. And I was wondering.
So there are a couple of things, a couple of things that make construction on a California community college campus a little different. And probably the most important thing is that we are required to comply with what's referred to as the Field Act. So the construction standard that we are held to is a higher construction standard than the construction standard for a four-year institution, either private or public. The Field Act applies to K-12, but in California, it applies, but, but we're still under that because we came out of K-12. So it, in effect, applies to K-14. So it does drive up construction cost because of the additional elements that have to be included.
The data I'm looking at doesn't, is for educational buildings?
Well, I understand it's for educational buildings, but it's not for California Community College educational buildings. It's for educational buildings, I believe. I'm not familiar with the report.
I'll share it later.
But, but if it's done in Brad Street, it But, but if it's done in Brad Street, it probably applies broadly to higher education.
Okay. One more question, unless you look like you had something. Okay.
I just have one more. So twice now, the taxpayers have kind of opened a door to a conversation about a smaller bond that they might not oppose, or might even support. And they've also told me personally, they would, in fact, we had maybe discussed, I talked to Dr. Kraft, maybe even a meeting this Monday, and I'm just wondering, is that going to happen? Because it seems important to bring in the people who are opposing you, and to sit them down, and to see if there's something that you could actually agree on, not to have that opposition. I actually think their plan is, is kind of brilliant. I mean, we are dealing with this legacy of a bond that was mis, that at least people perceive was mismanaged. So to take a small bond, I, I looked, you said the first building would be the 200 building, it's $26 million. I think that would be a nice humble gesture to the public, to go out for something small that they would approve, to be successful, and then to create a new legacy for maybe the, the following election, when you could go out for something bigger. So anyway, I'm just wondering, is there an intention to reach out to them, and to meet with them, and talk to them?
There is, and that meeting is already scheduled.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I didn't hear anything about it, so I just didn't know.
Well, we just, there was no reason yet to, I haven't confirmed within place or time, but I actually, we do have time, just not place.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Baker.
The good news about going last is, a lot of my questions are already answered. So, but I did have a couple, and a couple actually carrying over from our last meeting. First, my, but let me start at the top. In the presentation, in the PowerPoint, the community feedback survey, there was a prioritizing of items on a one through five scale. I'm just wondering, is, has there been any effort, since we're talking a lot about prioritization, about doing some kind of forced choice? Or is that something that maybe we could talk to Godby about, and whether there's any utility in that, in terms of trying to determine what the community would consider a priority, rather than just saying everything is a 3.9? So I'm just going to put that out there. I wonder also, kind of along the same line, we've talked about phasing, but has there been any discussion about prioritization, about if, you know, which ones of these are really truly the most important, and how we would determine that? Because of course, everybody's going, you know, if we polled the local community, you know, English department's going to say theirs is the most important, and chemistry's going to say theirs is the most important. But in terms of like, you know, the market and the community, what are they wanting? And then my final question actually was just about something that came up from one of our public comments last month, was about this issue of sea rise. And I'm just wondering if that is something that we can at least look at, because that is a very real possibility, and it would be a shame to spend a lot of money and build a beautiful campus, and then have it just in the river. So just would like to, I think it would be wise for us to at least take that into consideration as a part of this process, so that if that comes up, we can say, yeah, we're, we're prepared for that.
Certainly. Let me just say, in terms of prioritization, while we haven't identified specifically the prioritization, there are some things that will prioritize themselves in that, for example, if we are moving the writing and math success centers out of the 800 building, and moving them into the new 1100 building, then we can't renovate the 800 building until we move them out and into the 1100 building. We could do the 1400 and the 1600 at the same time, but I think the Office of Academic Affairs would kill me, because we would lose too many classrooms. And so those are the considerations in terms of what, what, which, which project follows which project. You know, as I said, at an earlier meeting, if we could close operations for three years, we could just do them all and, and be done with it, but we can't. So it, we need to look at what needs to follow what, because you're absolutely right, if we polled the campus, they're all a high priority, and they really are all a high priority.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll move on, unless you have anything else that you want to share with us.
I don't think so.
Is that exhaustive? Thank you. Leon, did you have something very brief that you wanted to share?
Thank you, Leon Brawning. I find it a little unusual that you would ask the taxpayers to pay again to remodel or renovate new buildings that they just paid for, for you, four or five years ago from Measure N. This building, Performing Arts Center, the library, the classrooms at the American Canyon High School. Don't you maintain your buildings? Why are you asking for 40-year tax money to remodel buildings that we just bought for you five years ago? The other thing is, why would you spend $3.5 million on the land, the acreage on Mount Veder? It's, I mean, it has no use. The deed restrictions on that, I've read the deeds, and they're, they're so restrictive that the land can be used for almost nothing, and if it's overused, it could trigger loss of the property because of that. I think you should look at it, I'm not a lawyer, but why, why would you spend $3.5 million to upgrade property that may not even be worth that? Thank you.
Maybe you can save some of those questions too, and have that conversation with Dr. Kraft. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 13.2, Student Success Scorecard. Dr. Wardle, welcome. I don't think we've seen you in a little bit.
Been a couple months, probably.
Yeah.
Good evening, board. Let's see here. Okay. So at the end of March, the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office released the 2018 Student Success Scorecard, and each college's scorecard data is posted on the chancellor's office website. And results for individual colleges, or the system as a whole, can be selected via a dropdown menu on the website, which I'll show you in just a minute. Cohorts of students are established each year based on a set of criteria developed by the chancellor's office, and then those cohorts of students are tracked for a defined period of time to determine whether they achieve certain educational milestones or outcomes. The results are reported among each cohort, as well as subpopulations among those cohorts, based on whether the students were prepared for college when they entered, as well as demographic affiliation, including gender, age, and race, ethnicity. So if this link will work. We shall see. Yes, okay. So here's what the Student Success Scorecard looks like on the chancellor's office website. And you go to the dropdown menu over here, you can pick statewide, if you want to see the system-wide figures, and then you can scroll down in alphabetical order, it'll eventually get to us. And you select Napa Valley College, and then it loads the scorecard, and the measures are listed up here. So for instance, for the completion of degree, certificate, or transfer, this gives you our completion rates among the college-prepared students, among those that were unprepared when they entered, and then our overall, oh, hold on. Wait a minute, why is it all NAs? That's not how it was on my computer. Let me try something else. Okay, so there's the statewide figures, and I can double-check. Well, ours should be on the dropdown menu. I don't know why it was NAs at that point. That's on there and not ours. Okay, so the scorecard is required by the state legislature, and the legislature and the chancellor's office work together to develop the scorecard and ensure public accountability. The guidelines for the Student Success Scorecard require local governing boards to interact with the scorecard data each year, and I will need to submit the minutes from tonight's meeting to the chancellor's office to document the discussion among the board has taken place. So the report that is attached to this agenda item is an internal report produced by the RIPI Office, that's Research, Planning, and Institutional Effectiveness. And the internal report is part of MVC's system for regularly monitoring and evaluating our performance. And so my presentation tonight will focus on that report. The internal MVC report structures the nine Student Success Scorecard measures among four different categories, and those are listed here, completion, momentum, remedial progress, and transfer level skills. And the slide lists the nine scorecard indicators that are highlighted in the local MVC report among those four categories. MVC's internal report includes a narrative summary of MVC's recent performance on the scorecard metrics, including comparison of MVC's performance to that of California Community College system over the most recent five cohorts. And the report also uses box and whisker plots to summarize performance among the 110-plus California community colleges over the last five years. And this slide highlights the primary features of the box and whisker plots, and so I'll briefly highlight, or briefly go over some of those measures. So the whiskers are, illustrate the range of the data. So that's spanning the lowest or minimum observation to the highest or maximum observation among each cohort. And then the box in each plot identifies the middle 50% of cases, which span the 25th through the 75th percentile. And so the middle 50% of cases, again represented by the box, represent typical performance across the community college system. The horizontal line within the box represents the median performance level, so that's the 50th percentile. And then the red data points, which are highlighted with connecting lines, those represent MVC's performance level for each year. And so the box and whisker plots that are on each page of the internal MVC report represent and summarize approximately 550 observations across the California Community College system. So this is a sample graph from the internal MVC report on the 2018 scorecard, and it, this conveys the distribution of performance levels of individual California community college campuses on the SPAR rate, which is the student progress and achievement rate. So as you can see here, MVC's performance on the SPAR has consistently exceeded the median among California community colleges. And over the past five cohorts, MVC's performance level has been around the 75th percentile. And again, that's represented by the upper limit of the box on each of the five cohorts that are represented here. Last year, when I presented the 2017 scorecard to the board, I noted a unique pattern that emerged among MVC's student progress and achievement rate, the SPAR data. And this slide includes an excerpt from the table on page two of the internal report. This table reports the overall SPAR rate, as well as the rate among two subsets of students, those that entered at the college level, or were deemed prepared for college-level work when they entered, and those that were below college level when they entered, or deemed unprepared. So if we compare the performance level of the first cohort that entered in 2007, 2008, with the performance level of the last cohort that entered in 2011, 2012, we see that the overall rate decreased between the two observations. So there, this decrease was slight, from 51.4% to 51.2%. However, if we look at the performance of the two subsets of students, performance actually increased between the two cohort years. So the rate among prepared students increased by 2.3% from 70.5% to 72.8%, and the rate among unprepared students increased by 3.5% from 42.7% to 46.2%. And so this is an example, yet again, of the unique statistical occurrence, which is called Simpson's Paradox, in which opposite patterns emerge among data at aggregate and disaggregated levels. So what happens is that trends that appear among different groups or subsets disappear, or even are reversed, when the groups are combined. So in this case, there was an increase in the performance of the two subpopulations, but when the two subpopulations are combined, the overall performance level decreased.
Robin, while you're on that slide, can I ask a quick question? And maybe this goes to Eric too, but does, do the changes with AB 705, will they affect this performance metric at all?
So one of the biggest changes is that, so part of the reason that Simpson's Paradox emerges among this is that our cohort of unprepared students is larger than the cohort of, of prepared students, and so since they tend to, you can see the numbers there, perform at a lower level in terms of reaching a degree that's, or outcome that's degree, certificate, or transfer-related, that's what pulls down the overall performance. This, the size of the cohorts will, will change dramatically, in terms of the first point of entry into English and math, and being deemed to be prepared or unprepared. With some of those changes, the prepared group will grow, and then it will remain to be determined whether they reach these outcomes at a same rate, or whether that changes.
So we might see the prepared percentage dip? Because of the increase in the cohort?
Yes, it could be, yeah. And, and at a minimum, the cohort is, the cohort size is going to change dramatically. You're going to have, I mean, I think it's possible that, that unprepared group will decrease, decrease, and potentially go away. And, and, and one of the things too, that's going along, alongside AB 705, is that the chancellor's office and groups of stakeholders around the state, including the RP group, are looking at a simplified metric system, which will revise a lot of these measures.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, just about those numbers. Do, do you have any inkling as to why things kind of went up a little bit, and then went back down? Is there, is there any indicators of why that happened?
It just, it just happens to be who's in the cohort. Sometimes it does get affected by, if you're talking about outcomes and getting particularly a local degree, it might depend as we constrain our course offerings, which some of these cohorts would have been affected when we did downsize, particularly when we cut the summer program dramatically. Okay, so next slide is some bragging points for you. So first of all, I want to emphasize, because this is something that is unique to MVC under the scorecard, as well as under ARCC, which was the Accountability Reporting for Community Colleges, which was its predecessor. So MVC is unique among California community colleges, is that, in that we tend to perform well on all of the scorecard indicators. And a much more typical pattern is that colleges perform well on some, and then below the median, or not as well on others. So here are some highlights or bragging points for you. So among the last cohort reported in the 2018 scorecard, MVC exceeded the system-level performance, as well as the average college-level performance on seven of the nine indicators, and those include the SPAR, the CTE completion rate, I was turning around to make sure Diana was still here, the 30 units rate, three of the progress rates, so English, ESL, and math, that's all of the remedial progress rates, and then the trans, the math transfer rates for both, or sorry, transfer, transfer level skill development for both year one and year two, both of those rates. Over the past five cohorts, MVC has improved performance on seven of the nine indicators, and the performance increased an average of 8.5% across those seven indicators over the five-year period. And then over the past five cohorts, MVC's CTE completion rates have averaged in the 92nd percentile among California community colleges. And meanwhile, English remedial progress rates have averaged in the 84th percentile, and when, them for the SPAR were, we averaged in the 76th. So as I mentioned, we are right at the upper limit of, of the middle 50% box there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the 2018 scorecard, and I'm also here to, again, ensure that the board has sufficient opportunity to interact with the data, the highlight of the year.
Trustee Baker.
I just wanted to let you know that I, while you were talking, I went to the website, and whatever that weird hiccup was, it's gone now.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I, I did it, I, I look at it all the time, I, yeah. Well, and it's, it's, at least, you know, maybe technology glitches happen elsewhere as well, so.
92nd percentile. That's huge.
And let me, let's see, if I escape out of here, maybe.
Is that, I don't know, is that because of the length of the program? Is that, maybe, did we have any idea? Is that, maybe did we have any idea why that high of a rate?
You mean, other than Diana and our faculty being so fantastic?
Well, that's a given, right? That's a given.
You know what, it's, there's a bit of change in the labor market. They get good jobs when they leave us, and we actually do have stellar faculty in those programs that are creating connections with those students in the classroom, and that kind of personal connection with those students helps support them to succeed. It really is a testament to our faculty in those programs.
That's awesome. That's just. Trustee Martinson.
So I just want to say, I thought it was really good to see the good work that was done with the remedial ESL students, because I know that was an area of concern before, and now we're up at the state level in that area, so I just want to say, good job, whatever you did in that program. So, and then it looked like the only area of concern was the more the transfer-level classes, especially in English, that was the only one that was below the state level. So I'm wondering, how does, besides us commenting on this document, how does this document influence things at the college level? Like, does it, when you see something like that, does it trigger anything? I know we already updated the educational master plan, I think the other plan, didn't we make it now a two- or three-year plan? So in between that, when you see something like that, does it trigger any reaction on the part of the college?
So I would say yes, and I will, following this meeting, I will be informing the whole campus community about the availability of this report. It has already gone to the Planning and Budget Committee. So one thing I would note about the final two measures, the transfer skills-related measures, is that they were introduced last year for the first time. And so, and I think there've been some challenges with the measurement, yet the chancellor's office for last year's report had to re-release it because there was an issue with the methodology. So yes, you're right that we do perform below the statewide and the average on this one, which is unique for both the first, the first-year tracking and the second-year tracking. However, I think there's a lot of optimism within here, in that if you look at the first cohort year, only 16%, and let's see, at the top of each page is where we, where the definition of the cohort is provided. So what they do is they look at the first-time students who completed six years, six units, and attempted an English course during their first year, and then they track them to see if they successfully completed a transfer-level English course in their first or second year. So that's what the first-year rate and the second-year rate are. So among the 2011, 2012 cohort, only 16% of our students that satisfied those criteria successfully completed transfer-level English in their first year. By the fifth cohort, that had more than doubled to 35.5%. This is something, I don't want to seal future thunder that might come in the fall, but this is something that we have a team that's been participating in the, leading from the middle academy that the RP group has offered, and it's in connection with Guided Pathways, and so this data will be shared in different ways next year.
Actually, so for Guided Pathways, because I was just looking at that, it talked about, like, it's a five-year plan, and I'm wondering, it talks about things that will happen at year one, year two. Are we in year one right now, or is next year year one? Next year, okay.
Yeah, hence the stay tuned part.
Thank you. Great stuff. Don't be a stranger. 13.3 Napa Valley Community College District, 2018-2019 initial proposal for negotiations with Napa Valley College Faculty Association, Dr. Kraft, or Charo, or, okay.
So in Article 26 of the collective bargaining agreement, we agreed to reopeners, and this sunshine proposal is in honor of Article 26, it is the district proposal for reopeners. And in our proposal, we are asking to bargain salaries, benefits, AB 119, which is union access to employee orientations and other terms. I look forward to bringing this item back next month, seeking for board approval to proceed with negotiations, and I also look forward to continued collaborations with the faculty association and productive conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask the board real quick before we go on to the consent calendar. Do we want a very quick, five-minute break? We've still got a number of things to cover.
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Speak, please. Okay, quick, five minutes, and we'll return.
Maybe you want to lead us?
I got your question about square footage. I don't know. Total discrepancy.
I can't tell you that, it was, was that for California or was it for state across the country?
There it is, it was this.
Yeah, this is national. I don't know what the total discrepancy might be.
It's still hot, though.
Is it? I just remember.
Don't chug it.
Hi there.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I am too. I'm going to try to not obsess on.
They're on the HR document, they're 14.2. So the board made a decision last year that faculty hires will go onto the board's HR document, so that's all on there. So you can, you can let her know, 20 minutes, well, probably 20 minutes. I have, I have a feeling, I have a feeling, probably, I have a feeling that that document will be pulled off for questions, but ostensibly in the next one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Other than that, question?
I don't see you.
No.
I don't agree.
I don't think she's.
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 Some people, some people.
He's a rescue.
I just see.
I just want to.
I guess I would, I would put you somewhere.
I love that vest, that's so cute.
I mean, it's something like that.
All right, let's do this.
Do I need to make room in the unit plan somewhere for that? Because you got it, just ask.
Maybe I'll sleep tonight, might as well.
You're going to have that one.
She's probably not, she's.
It was deserved.
We're back in session. Is that good enough? Does that wake people up a little bit? All right, on to consent calendar. 14.1, approval of consent calendar. Are there any questions, discussions on any item on consent calendar?
Just because I'm curious about it, 14.8, plus I think people stuck around for that item, so 14.8.
Do you want to, that's the, that's the one B, 14.8.
Are you wanting to pull it?
Or what? Hold on before we. What is the?
I did have a question about it, just out of curiosity, but it's late, too. It's 10 o'clock, so I'm going back and forth, sorry.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I'll pull it. It'll be really quick. 14.8.
You got a question?
Yeah.
Well.
Not here, but almost.
So let me understand it, are we pulling the item? Because then we'll be moving it down to 15-something.
Can I ask a question without pulling it?
No.
Okay, I'll pull it.
Yes.
Move it.
Okay. So we'll rearrange.
Okay. Carol Lee, could you just help me with the rearranging? Is it preferable to?
And we'll put it.
Can I just move it here? Or should I go to the bottom? No, yeah.
We'll put it at the very beginning of 15, of action items.
Refresh this one?
Is that correct?
It's refreshing.
Okay.
It ended up.
Might as well.
Yeah.
Okay, I refreshed for you, since you were.
Do you want me to move it again? It's now at 15.2.
Can you guys get it at the beginning rather than?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'll move it up one. It won't get up there, go on, go on.
Do we have approval of everything else? Yes. So did somebody make a motion on the rest of the consent calendar? I will.
Motion for approval with 14.8.
Second. Motion, Iverson, second. Rios, all in favor? Wait till the little electronic thing pops up.
Iverson, I'm sorry.
Of course, we know Baldi.
Reset. Okay, online voting is available.
All right.
Thank you, that carries unanimously.
Okay, great. So then with everything reordered, unless you refresh your page, it won't necessarily show up, but we should have the professional services agreement between the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay and Napa-Sonoma Small Business Development Center. And whoever wants to answer any questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Monahan.
Yeah, I was just, so I was just reading about it, so I'm trying, so are there people at Napa Valley College that are providing this assistant to these businesses that are affected by the fire, this service?
Just for context, so I'm the, Charlie Monahan, the interim director of Economic Workforce Development. The SBDC is a program that I'm supervising currently, and I'm also a former SBDC advisor and director in 2009, 2010. So that's for context, and this is a program, actually, I put together about eight years ago, and what it is, is we have Small Business Development Center advisors providing this work for the Workforce Investment Board.
So are they college professors that are providing the service, or who's, or business people from the community?
The Small Business Development Center is hosted, the Napa-Sonoma Small Business Development Centers are hosted by Napa Valley College. So that's the nation, nationwide Small Business Development Center program, so they're employees of the college, but they're business advisors who work with small businesses in the community.
Okay.
Does that make sense? And so they are, this program is a 15-hour commitment to each client, and what it does is it goes entirely through every aspect of the business. So they look at operations, marketing, capital, the business plan, HR, if there's an existing process for all of those things, and it's kind of a cool little methodology, it's no problem, small problem, big problem. You know, and then we spend the 15 hours with that, do some interviews with key personnel, and then they get a report and a personal interview to go over the results. The Workforce Investment Board calls it layoff aversion, in the language of the Small Business Development Center, it's job retention.
So the $10,000, is that something we get because we're providing the service?
Yeah, so we provide that service, we work it up, we send them a bill for each one, and they've contracted to do, I think it was 10.
So this is actually adding to the budget, not?
Rios, all in favor? Wait till the little electronic thing pops up.
Iverson, I'm sorry.
Of course, we know Baldini votes.
Okay, online voting is available.
All right.
Thank you, that carries unanimously.
Okay, great. So, then with everything reordered, unless you refresh your page, it won't necessarily show up. But we should have the professional services agreement between the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay and Napa-Sonoma Small Business Development Center. And whoever wants to answer any questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Monahan.
Yeah, I was just, so I was just reading about it, so I'm trying, so are there people at Napa Valley College that are providing this assistance to these businesses that are affected by the fire, this service?
Just for context, so I'm the, Charlie Monahan, the interim director of economic workforce development. The SBDC is a program that I'm supervising currently. And I'm also a former SBDC advisor and director in 2009, 2010. So, that's for context. And this is a program, actually, I put together about eight years ago. And what it is, is we have Small Business Development Center advisors providing this work for the Workforce Investment Board.
So, are they college professors that are providing the service? Or who's, or business people from the community?
The Small Business Development Center is hosted, the Napa-Sonoma Small Business Development Centers are hosted by Napa Valley College. So, that's the nation, nationwide Small Business Development Center program. So, they're employees of the college, but they're business advisors who work with small businesses in the community.
Okay.
Does that make sense? And so, they are a program, is a 15-hour commitment to each client. And what it does is it goes entirely through every aspect of the business. So, they look at operations, marketing, capital, their business plan, HR, if there's an existing process for all of those things. And it's kind of a cool little methodology. It's no problem, small problem, big problem. You know, and then we spend the 15 hours with that, do some interviews with key personnel, and then they get a report and a personal interview to go over the results. The Workforce Investment Board calls it layoff aversion. In the language of the Small Business Development Center, it's job retention.
So, the $10,000, is that something we get because we're providing the service?
Yeah, so we provide that service, we work it up, we send them a bill for each one, and they've contracted to do, I think it was 10.
So, this is actually adding to the budget, not taking away from the budget?
Yeah, that provides the funding to do those, those services.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we will need a motion in a second.
Move approval.
Baldini moves to approve, and Iverson, second. And just so everybody knows, I am on the executive board of the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, but it is a nonprofit, so it does not conflict with me voting.
Online voting is available. Motion carries, thank you. Unanimous.
15.2, curriculum changes, spring. Second. Who's second? Oh, Iverson Segura.
You may vote online. Motion carries, unanimous.
All right, 15.3, result of division chair election. Do we, does anyone want to speak on that? Or are we good to just handle it?
Second.
Iverson Rios.
Online voting is open.
And Karen Larson is my next door neighbor. And she takes my kid to school every day. And I'm not going to recuse myself.
But you acknowledged.
There we go. Thank you, motion carries, unanimous.
Thank you. 15.4, ratified financial documents.
I have a question on this.
Yes.
When we, when it's on the agenda, why is childcare a separate line item than general fund?
Because childcare is in a separate fund. So, childcare, childcare expenditures are tracked separately from general fund expenditures.
Is there a reason for that? I mean, obviously, there is, what is the reason for that?
Sure. So, we actually, state requires, the state chancellor's office requires us to track items like the childcare in the 30 funds, so Fund 33, Fund 35. Thank you.
Motion in a second, please.
Show move.
Baldini Iverson.
Online voting is open. Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
15.5, district technology plan. And here comes Bob Parker.
So, very quickly, we are bringing you the district technology plan tonight. Well, I'm not, but the district technology committee is bringing you the plan. The plan has gone through the participatory governance process. The council of presidents has endorsed it. The planning and budget committee has endorsed it. It appeared on the agenda at the academic senate meeting on Tuesday. And the academic senate voted to add some language to the technology plan that has to do with the participatory governance process related to development of technology, in particular instructional technology. Those changes are not incorporated in the plan that you're seeing tonight because those changes require going through the participatory governance process in order to incorporate those changes. So, we will be picking those changes up in that discussion about the governance process as it relates to instructional technology when we return in the fall. But the key elements of the plan that you're seeing tonight, so the plan itself, as well as the appendices, remain the same. And so, I have with me tonight Eric Halk, our director of institutional technology, who is the administrative co-chair of the technology committee. We had hoped to have Joshua Hanson, who is the faculty co-chair, but he has to be on a plane at 5 o'clock tomorrow morning, and so, he's not here. So, I'll turn it over to Eric to go just briefly walk you through the process of how we got to tonight and what elements are in the technology plan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Again, I just want to say my unfortunate that Josh couldn't be here this evening. He sends his apologies, but he does have a very early morning and hung out as long as he could for today. I know many of you have already seen some elements of the plan, but I just want to hit some highlights of what's there. The plan, as you know, has been in development for some time. In fact, started during the 2016-17 academic year, and then continued in terms of its development this present year. The plan was originally released in terms of draft, in terms of what the technology committee had put together in December. We gathered much feedback from the various constituencies and campus at large, and incorporated many of those elements back into our further revisions, continuing to share them out for additional feedback over the course of the last several months. We've met and conferred with all the major groups, including classified senate, administrative confidential senate, academic senate through faculty business as well, as well as the ASNVC, to go over the technology plan and how it's taken shape. In terms of broad strokes, the technology plan focuses on primarily four major strategic areas, including standardization and technology currency, operational and workflow effective efficiencies, I should say. Operational, or I said that one, infrastructure and access improvements, as well as safety and security. The strategic initiative areas have also been cross-referenced with our strategic plan as adopted by the planning and budgeting committee for the college, as well as contains an element of the appendix documents, which contain, in many respects, the living document aspects that we hope for with the technology plan to continue to address and revise on a regular basis. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you may have around the technology plan that I can answer for you this evening.
One quick question, so where does like the server room fit into this whole plan?
The server room would be part of our infrastructure, in many respects. That's where you'd see that being addressed primarily. In terms of specifics, did you have specific elements on your server?
Yeah, I mean, I've heard in the past that it gets warm in there, that we've had issues keeping it cool. Does that come into this plan too, some of those logistical issues?
In terms of this plan, it does not get into those, those fine level specifics around things like heating and cooling specifically, but rather, you know, trying to approach it from a infrastructure basis, determining how is that data center being managed, but also from a perspective of disaster recovery, and how are we handling those kind of things as well? Our elements of that, but not really getting to the specifics of addressing heat concerns. Obviously, those are key elements of that, that we'd be, in some respects, partnering with facilities on in terms of making sure that those things are occurring and happening, in terms of that plan as well, and kind of a combination of integration between those two elements.
Thank you.
Trustee Martin.
First, I want to say it's, obviously, a lot of thought went into this document. It's a very well-prepared document. I just had one question and then one comment. I noticed there was no student rep, and I'm just wondering, was there an effort made? And just nobody was interested, or why was there no student rep?
We've, have been unable to have a student rep in attendance. We have reached out to ASNVC. We had a rep for a brief period, but didn't actually have them in attendance in any of our meetings. But we did have, we did meet with ASNVC to review the technology plan with their leadership during one of their meetings, I believe it was in February. So, yes.
Okay, and then the other thing, it said that there was no board policy on computer and network use, and no administrative procedures, and it's true, there are no administrative procedures, but there is actually a policy. It's old, it's from 1997, needs to be updated, but there, there is a policy.
There is a policy, you're correct.
Thank you.
Manvir.
In any part of this plan, is there, is there a plan to revamp the website for the college?
There is an identified element within the plan to reevaluate our website and look at how we can modernize it to be both mobile-friendly, as well as meeting accessibility standards, 504, 508 compliance in that as well.
Is there a timeframe of when the website would be updated?
Not at present, no.
Trustee Baker.
I was just going to clarify what the plan was for incorporating the comments from the academic senate. And you said, so we're adopting it now, but it's going to come back in the fall? Is that the plan?
So, in order for those recommended additions to be in the plan, it has to go through the other constituent groups who have already approved the plan. And so, that would be happening at this point, because we're almost at the end of the spring semester, we wouldn't be able to pick that up again until people return in August.
Thank you. And we'll look for a motion in a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Iverson Baker.
Online voting is opened.
Can you say mine again?
She said that for the student.
Are you able to say mine again? Because I typed and it went away.
You are listed as abstained, do you wish to change yours?
Yeah, I voted yes, I mean, I want to vote yes.
Okay.
I spoke to Catherine previously about it, and she said that the system doesn't allow the student member to vote.
Oh, interesting.
Keeps it simple that way.
Okay, 15.6, quarterly financial statement of income. Motion in a second.
So...
Move approved, second.
Segura Baker.
Okay, you may vote. Motion carries, that's unanimous.
15.7, California Community College Chancellor's Office Quarterly Financial Statement Reports. Motion in a second, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Rios Baldini.
Okay. Thank you, motion carries, unanimous.
15.8, acceptance of 2018-2019 initial proposal for negotiations from the Napa Valley College Faculty Association.
Move for approval.
Second. Iverson Segura.
Chair. What would this do with past? If approved, what happens after that, for this one?
Charles, do you want to answer that? We go into negotiations, but...
So, this is accepting the faculty association sunshine proposal for us to enter into bargaining in the fall. And if the board doesn't accept it, well, then we will have to go back to the faculty association and say, "Sorry, try again," and then we will have legal costs because faculty association would not be very happy.
So, my question then is, as a trustee, if I'm voting to approve this, why can't I then be in the closed session room when the negotiations go on?
We're, the board is not...
Okay.
Yeah.
This isn't what the board of trustees, gotcha.
Okay, where were we? Motion, second, we had the motion and the second?
Yes, we do. And online voting is now available. Thank you, the motion carries, unanimous.
Okay, we're now at 15.9, the old 15.8. And we did have some public comment, but I don't... Gary is still here. Gary, you had comment on 15.9? Wait, contract by Godby?
No.
No? Okay. Oh! No, you're further down the line, that was people who are gone. Okay. It's late. All right. So, then, Godby, contract with Godby. Motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Second. Rios Segura, any discussion?
Is there going to be a presentation on this? Like, what's the scope of the bond? What, we're still kind of defining the scope of the bonds, so how do we survey?
Do you have specific questions?
Yeah, what are we surveying? Are we the same thing, the 280 million that we did before? A smaller bond, after we have the taxpayers, what are we surveying for?
Those are going to be developed by, so right now, you're approving the development of that survey, and then we'll be meeting with Godby to develop that survey. So, I don't have any specifics yet what are going to be in there, because we have no number to test, other than, we tested several levels last time, I should know.
Right, but, okay, so, already, we went out and surveyed people with just, at that time, it was just kind of a made-up number, it was 280 million, because it was the most we could ask for. So, I'm not sure about doing that, but now, I guess, how do we know what we're surveying if we don't even know what we're wanting to do? So, are we again going to do fishing, like throw out different numbers? Or are we going to decide what we want to do and then survey on that amount?
It will be, I would almost certainly think that it would be arranged like it was last time. So, last time that this question was asked, I believe it began with a lower number, and then worked its way up to the total assessed value that could be, the 284. 284 has been used from taxpayers and other folks as a marker, but you certainly haven't addressed that yet. So, my guess is that that question would still have that range. It could never exceed what we could legally go up for in assessed value, and it could be as low as a dollar, but I don't think that would be a wise decision either.
So, I guess, two things. If we're going to do exactly what we did before, I don't understand the purpose of that, because we already, in my opinion, we didn't get good enough polling numbers that time. If anything, now, after the fires, they would be worse. But I just, I think the public doesn't want us to be asking them, "What do you want? And how much will you pay for?" They want us to come out and say, "This is what we really need, and this is how much it would cost." And we still haven't defined that, so I think it's, again, premature to be going out and surveying the community. I think, I move, I'm going to amend the motion, that we wait until we've defined the scope of the bonds, and then we can go out and survey on that, what we actually need and are going to ask for.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Question, is part of the intent of the survey to try to narrow that scope still? Is that, is, so that it's not just a repeat of the previous? I know that there was some plan to do another temperature check before we actually officially put it, vote to put it on the ballot or not. But is the intent also to use this as an opportunity to refine? Or are we at a point where we feel like we've already done that, and now we're just...
It's the latter. This is, A, a temperature check, if you will, it's more than that. It's a scientifically valid instrument. And then the second piece would be to, to fine-tune. Some things occurred, including the fire, including, you know, other kinds of events prior to the last one, so this is exactly that. This would be a sense of deep information... This would be a sense of deep information the board could look at, analyze, think about, and it will certainly include other kinds of questions that weren't, there's no way to reference, "Based on the fire that occurred in October, blah, blah, blah," you know, that question. And there are other, um, you know, other refinements, I think, that would be asked in it. We haven't yet had those conversations with them, so you're kind of approving the engagement of moving forward with that.
I think that if we delay this, it, um, doesn't get the information back to us again for another conversation, so I would not be in favor of delaying this information. I'm actually looking forward, because as Dr. Kraft says, circumstances are very different and in this next round of surveys, and I would certainly be interested in seeing that information before making a decision.
I have a quick question regarding...
Hang on, Kyle, uh, Manvir was first.
For this survey, I'm still confused on, are we doing it for the max amount still or some other amount?
That is still what I'm understanding, Ron, is in the...
No, I, I think you're going to find, Carol, do you have an answer for this, or no? Because you worked a bit on this.
They typically test a range of dollar amounts, and they test better or worse.
Okay, so for this survey, there'll be a range of a low amount with a high amount?
Correct.
And that was, that will tell us the most likely one that would be approved by the voters?
It will give you data on, yes.
Thank you.
If there's going to be a meeting on Monday with the taxpayers to talk about a bond they could support, wouldn't we want to have that information and test that, rather than, again, just doing this fishing expedition? Again, I think people don't want that anymore, they want to see leadership from the college, they want to hear what we actually need and the actual dollar amount, and will you support it?
That's not what we're voting, though, right now, we're just voting on supporting these services, the survey services.
And it's premature, I think it's premature.
And the development of the survey is, is in process, and I'm sure all of those things would go into the...
Monday's meeting could provide information for the development of the survey, but we can't develop it without this contract.
Right.
But how can the board, how do we know if we want to spend another $36,000 until we know what the proposal is? Because if it's going to be to go out again for 280 million, I don't support it, because we already did that, and we didn't get good polling, and it will probably be even worse now. So, I don't see how we can support polling when we don't know what we're polling for, what it's going to look like.
Iverson, you had a question.
I had a question just regarding, like, telephone sampling, and is it cell phones or is it landlines? And, because I don't even have a landline, so...
It's, it's both these days, and there's also an online kind of internet component as well, that, that is increasing in its...
Text.
Yeah.
I know people were saying that they receive text messages too, right?
To invitation to participate online, yes.
So, the motion was to approve this contract, there was there, then an amendment with a second to wait.
To define the scope of the bond before we go out for another survey.
And so, we need to first vote on the amendment to postpone, and, and so I need to, we need to take a vote on that.
And the second on the amended vote was, Manvir?
Manvir.
In this case, since he's not listed as a voting member, he's not listed under my choices for a second.
Oh, for a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you can write, I think last time you wrote it in, right?
I can certainly write it in later, but right now, in order for the vote to go through, I need to choose somebody, so we could just do a manual vote, I would say?
Yeah, do a manual vote.
Do a manual vote, okay. Okay.
I'm ready for that.
All right. So, all in favor of the amendment to postpone this, the approval of this contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
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 All right, so, the amendment does not pass. So, we go back? Oh, sorry.
Voice for him.
Voice.
So, those in favor would be?
In favor was...
Of the amended motion?
So, yeah, so that was Martinson and Sandu were in favor. Everybody else?
I also said, yes.
Oh, you, you?
Yes, I'm...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll vote back to the main motion, which was to accept this contract. All in favor? Should we just go through, go down the line, since we're doing this verbal? Martinson?
No.
Rios?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes, no.
All right, thank you, motion passes. 15.10 Waiver of First Reading and Adoption of Board Policy 6307: Debt Issuance and Management. And I think my understanding is that we need this to move forward, Bob, on the refinancing?
We need this to move forward on the refinancing, yes. This is something that current state law requires. The last time we did refinancing, this was not a requirement. For the upcoming refinancing, which we hope to execute early June, we need this board policy in place.
Move approval.
Rio, and Iverson?
I just have a comment. So, I know that we also have to have administrative procedures for this, and, so I'm just wondering, just want to throw out there, that in the future, can we see the administrative, even though we don't approve them, at the same time? Because when, during accreditation, we went through a whole bunch of policies that we updated, and obviously, we didn't have the administrative procedures being developed at the same time, because we're missing a lot of them, even legally required ones. So, I think we need to see that they're also being developed. So, is that an option to, when we approve these board policies, to also just see the administrative regulations, so we can ensure that they're also being developed simultaneously? Because to have policies but without any procedures to implement them, they're kind of, there's no point. We, we need the implementation of the policies as well.
Bob, do you have an answer to that?
Yes, I just wanted to say that the administrative procedures have been developed as well, and they have gone through the participatory governance process.
Thank you.
So, is that something, even though we don't approve them, that we could just see? When, when they come up, just see them side by side, so we can not only see our policies, but how they're going to be implemented? Is that, okay?
If and when we ever have them ready, that's, that's the best way to do that.
Okay, so I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. Online voting is available. And that is carries unanimously.
15.11 Second Reading of New Revised or to Be Repealed Board Policies. Motion in a second, please.
Move to approve.
Martinson, Iverson?
Sorry.
Chair, why are we repealing this?
I'm sorry?
Why are these being repealed?
They're being repealed because they were replaced some time ago by Board Policy 7340 on leaves, they were just neglected to repeal those at that time.
So, right above where it says "Public Content," the policies below were replaced. Do you see that? Any further discussion? Okay, I believe we're ready to vote.
Okay, the voting is online. And that carries unanimously, thank you.
We polled the next item.
It's still on the agenda, and I actually didn't understand why we polled it, because...
Well, but we did, so it's polled, the, it was approved, the agenda was adopted, so it was, it was, I believe, so staff could have additional time, so we really, we aren't able to discuss that at this point.
Okay, so, all right.
15.12, I guess, is that correct with the movement?
Yes.
Agreement to Repair Feeder Connections at Solar Field. Motion in a second?
Move approval.
Second.
Baldini, Segura? Any further discussion?
Just have a question, is, is that something that's affected their performance, and will fixing it, like, help us save energy, or is it not going to help us save energy?
So, it has affected the performance, in fact, it was such a critical failure that we had to shut the solar field down. The repairs are covered by insurance, also, the good news is that the lost savings are covered by insurance as well. Well, no, 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 the solar field, this just happened two months ago. So, so, the solar field has been operational for quite a while, but there was a failure in a splice, which was determined to be a deficiency in the splice, therefore, it's covered by insurance, and so the repairs will be taking place very shortly. But the insurance is covering not only the cost of the repairs, but it's also reimbursing the college for lost savings that resulted from the loss of the solar field.
Thank you. We had a motion in a second, am I, any further discussion? All right, let's move to vote.
Online voting is open. And that motion carries unanimously.
Okay. And next, we have the resolution to approve from the Ethics Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have Iverson Baker.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I have a question and a comment, first of all, who, who wrote this? I was just curious.
It was originally drafted by staff, and then the committee got together and made some changes. And so, the committee ultimately approved and, and put it together.
Okay, so I just have one thing that I'd like to suggest that we change, because I don't think it's completely accurate, and that's the second to the last sentence, I think we should strike at the recommendation of the Ethics Committee, because what we voted on actually wasn't the recommendation of the Ethics Committee, it was a recommendation by trustee Rios and trustee Baldini, so...
Not for, not for the, not for the resolution?
No, so the sentence says, "The Board of Trustees at the recommendation of the Ethics Subcommittee and with a majority vote of the Board of Trustees, Martinson recused, adopted a motion, including reaffirming its commitment to the ethical conduct, to ethical conduct." So, that wasn't the recommendation of the Subcommittee. We didn't adopt the recommendation of the Subcommittee, we adopted amended motion. So, part of the, I mean, I guess we adopted part of the recommendation of the Ethics Committee, but we didn't adopt the whole recommendation, so I want to move to strike at the recommendation of the Ethics Subcommittee.
So, what, what language? I think it would be, I don't think it would be strike, because the recommendation was the Ethics Committee, I would say, uh...
I have a motion on the table.
Add the, add the...
Can we put, can we, I see if there's a second, and then we can talk about it?
There was a motion.
Yes, I moved to...
I didn't, I never heard the word amendment.
Yeah, I did. So, I moved to strike, quote, "At the recommendation of the Ethics Subcommittee."
I'm going to second that, I think technically, um, she's right, I don't think that, I think that was the motion that I made that then got approved, it was not the recommendation that had been made originally by the committee.
I was just going to say that it would somehow, just adding the word amendment, so that...
Why is it important?
I think it'd be fine to take it out.
It's what the board, the board voted, six to zero, Martinson recused.
So, just what we're, what the amendment is, let me get, let me make sure I've got this right, the amendment is, the recommendation, we're just removing the words "Ethics Subcommittee"?
No, it would be, whereas the Board of Trustees, by majority vote, adopted a motion, including, is that correct? So, we would just take out the phrase "at the recommendation of the Ethics Subcommittee."
Okay, got it, okay, all right. I think we have that? Do we have that?
I have that.
Okay. All right, so let's vote on the, uh...
I'm sorry, was there a second on that one?
We had Martinson amended, Rios second.
Okay. And that is available for online voting. And that was voting to accept the amendment, correct?
Correct.
So, now we have to vote on it.
Well, I think there was a motion, I think mine was the original motion, I made the first motion on this item.
Oh.
Right?
Well, right now, we're voting on the, right now, we're voting on the amendment, we haven't gone back to the main, we haven't gone back to the main motion yet.
All right, you're right, it was an amended motion, okay.
Okay, I'm still waiting for two votes.
Baldini?
Mr. Iverson and Ms. Segura.
Aye. You should have mine now.
Okay. The motion carries with one abstaining.
All right, now we go back to, to vote on the main motion with the amendment. Uh, okay.
I think I seconded.
Original motion.
I think I did.
Yep.
I didn't, I never got the first motion and second.
Baker seconded.
Amy?
Amy did an amended motion.
Okay. We voted on the amendment, now we're voting on the main motion with the amendment.
Okay. Okay. And I will fine, fine tune the motion when I get a chance.
Thank you, I just have one comment, if I can.
Hold, hold, we all voted? We're all voting right now? Everybody voted?
Online voting is available, let me see, one, two...
Baldini.
Motion carries, five yes, two no.
Okay. All right, so we are done.
What were the votes? Who voted yes and who voted no?
The two no votes were trustee Rios and trustee Iverson.
Wait on the final amended motion?
Correct.
But you, you voted on it the first time.
You made the motion.
That's not appropriate.
To ask people why they voted on something.
I said, I'm confused, because we voted on the amended motion.
No, we voted on the amend, the way...
Change my vote.
So, we have to vote on it twice?
You have to vote on the...
For some reason.
And then the amended motion, the main amended motion.
That was a, should be a yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, it carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I, am I allowed to make a comment, or no?
No, we're done.
All right.
15.14 Request to Revise Board Update, and I do have a comment, a public comment from Gary Orton.
And I'm also going to talk during public comment, because I'm going to recuse myself from the deliberation in the vote.
Okay. Mr. Orton?
Gary Orton, I live in Napa, Madam Chair, members of the board, whoever wrote this must have George Orwell as kin. This thing has lots of al... This thing has lots of allegations. There had never been a board finding that trustee Martinson had failed to follow board policy. As a matter of fact, the Subcommittee made a recommendation and it was irrelevant. Yet, all of this gets garbaged. Somebody gets trashed. Terribly unfair. I don't know what the motion is going to be, but this should not be appearing as a public document. This must violate some Board of Ethics rule that you have. This is not true. You can't point to any finding the Board made as to these things. These are allegations, allegations that turns out were never supported. Thank you.
Okay, so, actually, because they're related, I am going to say what I was going to say for the last item. That, I know the purpose of the resolution was to repair any damage with the academic senate and I hope it accomplished that. But I hope there will be an effort made to repair any damage that was caused by the process to Paul Anamosa, a professor who didn't choose to have all of his personal emails uploaded without his name redacted. His comments and his emails were dismissed by the head of his program because he's a new instructor when he made some really valid points in his emails. And also, I hope somebody's talked to him about the fact that he has the right to approach trustees if he has any concerns in the future and that his privacy will be respected in the future. As far as this, I just wrote a short statement. So, I requested that this item be put on the agenda because I have a general concern about anything more than official board actions being reported out to the college community after a board meeting and that those actions be reported out in a clear and accurate way. It stated in our ethics policy that we only exercise authority as a whole board. So, once the Board has acted on an issue, the opinion of an individual trustee or an ad hoc committee is irrelevant. Given the manner in which this has arose, which I think was avoidable, I'm choosing not to participate in the deliberation, the voting, because it could be misconstrued. So, I'll just say that regardless of the Board's action tonight, I will be working at a policy level to address the issues that came up before, during, and after the board meeting, which I think have been overlooked. So, specifically, the issue at a policy level of toxins, toxic pesticides being used on campus, how the, improving the ethics policy to clarify exactly how accreditation standard four is applicable to trustee communications with college employees and updating the whistleblower protection law or policy to inform college employees that they have the right to disclose any improper college activities to board members and that those communications are legally protected. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? All right. So, we will move to have a motion and a second and then we can have discussion. Somebody move? The, the motion at this point is still to. That's a good point. This really doesn't, well, first of all, I don't think this belongs on the Board agenda. So, the. I guess the motion. Okay, okay. The motion is to revise the update. And, and that's right?
Do we have a?
Okay, so.
But do we have a revised to what? I mean, do we have a?
I think you, you don't have a motion unless someone makes a motion.
Right.
Oh, thank you.
So, the agenda item was presented as a revision, but none has been suggested thus far.
Okay.
I don't think this is anything that the.
So, is there, let me just ask once again, is there a motion to approve this revision?
Well, we don't have a revision.
Okay.
Or even consider it, I guess. So, I don't, I don't think that this is something that the Board needs to be getting into and that then it's going to be all staff emails coming out. We're going to have to go through them, so I'm not making a motion.
I'm not familiar with this document because I, I asked and I think it goes out via all staff, which I for some reason don't get. Is this different from usual?
It's the same, it's consistent.
It comes out of the Office of Institutional Advancement, out of the Public Information Office following each, like, there will be one following this meeting as well.
Okay, I am not hearing a motion, so this is not moving forward. All right, on to board reports. Standing committee and other appointment reports. We'll start with DAS.
We have not met. Our next meeting will be on June 26th and the master agreement is very, the most important thing on the agenda. So, we're working out on definitions on certain things that will be included on there.
Thank you. VWT or Wine, Viticulture and Wine Marie Foundation, Mr. Baldini?
We have not yet met, but we do have a, a date. And it was supposed to have been this week, but we pushed it back until Monday.
Well, it looks like it will be moving again, unfortunately. It's a difficult time of year.
So, no report.
Okay.
No meeting, no report.
And Legislative Affairs Committee, we will not be meeting again until June?
Can we confirm the date, though? Because I saw in the initial notes that you sent out, you set it for the 10th, which is a Sunday, so.
That's dedication.
Yeah, wow. Sunday's good for me, not you?
No, it depends.
Okay, well, Catherine's, yeah, you can look that up and confirm later. That's fine. Audit and Finance Committee, have you met?
Yeah, I took minutes and I asked them to be uploaded. This was the reason why they couldn't be uploaded to Board Docs.
We, yeah, there was. We're working on the webpage, right? So, the webpage is up now, correct? Or no? Well, it was some of it.
I think that's why we pulled that item.
I don't think we did. There was no place to really put them, so what we'll, what we'll do.
Can they be attached to Board Docs for now? After this meeting? I'm going to go over them, but can we attach them to Board Docs?
Yeah, I think that, that's, staff, staff would like to talk to you about some of those notes as well. And then, and then what we can maybe just stick them up there with, what is, what is.
So, the plan is for them to go on the web, website, on the page for this committee?
Yeah, and I'm, and I don't think that we have the answer to that tonight.
No, and they weren't approved yet.
Carol Lee made.
So, when we prove them, they'll go up?
Quite a few questions about, you know, they weren't approved yet and there was discrepancies between.
So, right now, we'll just call them notes and then if they get approved, they're minutes and then they can go up to the website at the next, after the next meeting.
Maybe we could also talk about staff taking the minutes versus.
That would be great.
And some other process issues.
Okay, so I'm just going to go over my notes from the meeting.
A report.
A few highlights, yeah. So, I don't need to go over everything, but, so during public comment, Mr. Orton went over the, his suggestions for the changes for the whistleblower protection policy. Let's see. I think the other actions, the only action the Board took was we did review the bids and contracts policy and we, I had made a suggested change to that policy to add in the statement, quote, "All bids and contracts reviewed by legal counsel will be signed off, approved as to form in legality." And trustee Rios seconded that change and it was approved unanimously. So, with that suggestion, it will be going through shared governance and then coming to the Board. We also did review the Audit and Finance Committee description. I'm not sure why it was pulled because it did reflect our suggested changes that we wanted to bring to the Board, so not sure what happened with that. And we agreed to those changes by consensus. And our next board meeting will be Thursday, June 7th at 4:00 PM and we're going to be meeting with the auditors here in the boardroom. Thanks.
Real Property Management Committee, Baldini?
Yes, we did have a meeting and we voted unanimously to adopt the committee purpose and description language. Oh, it is. The Real Property Committee did have a meeting on May 7th and we agreed unanimously to adopt the committee purpose and description, which defines our, our mission. We also heard from, from staff on updates about Bumpy Camp and update on housing, wine train projects, I'm all a connection, et cetera, but nothing other than to report on, other than our vote.
Thank you. And the last is McPherson Distinctive Teaching Award. And I think we know the results of that, right? All right. So, now we go on to future agenda items and Mr. Orton?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, as I stated in my, at the public comments section, I'm still waiting to hear regarding my request. I mean, I looked at your policies, I looked at your regulations, I followed the regulations. They had a number of things to put down. I put those things down. I didn't give you, I gave some of you, I gave, actually, I addressed the Audit Committee. I gave them copy, copy of the letter and all the backup material. Many pages having to do with which statutes there were. The first sentence in the, and I explained to them that the first sentence of the proposed policy is the same sentence that comes out of the Napa Valley Unified School District. They have a similar law for, for school districts, almost word for word, the one that applies to community colleges.
Can I say that, so it's, because obviously, right now, we don't want to discuss the item, but.
Well, just tell me when you're going to put it on the agenda.
Exactly. So, what I was going to say is that I got ahold of it and my mistake, I thought someone had reached out to you.
Excuse me, excuse me. It was addressed to the President of the College.
Yes.
You were, you were, you were a copy.
I also got a copy.
That's right.
And so, so I will take ownership, though, in the future, when I get something like that and make sure that there has been some follow-up. And so, there was.
Well, you must know something now, though.
Yes, so.
Could you, could you give me a time estimate of when it's going to be on, on which, which month?
I know that, hold on one second, because I made a little note here. I know that the staff is going to be working on process of policy review throughout the summer and bids and contracts are also going to be picked up again in the fall to answer some of this other, and BP 77 whistleblower policy as well. So, that's, that's what I have as far as policy work that's going to be done. Do we have, Ron, anything to add to that?
Let me just add one more thing. There's a statutory right for a member of the public to request something to be put on the agenda. Unless there's a clear reason why it can't be put on the agenda, my rights are being violated.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Gary. And, and I would have to do a mea culpa here. I have no track on this request at all.
I hand-delivered it to your office, sir.
Well, I'm saying.
And I got a response that it had been received.
So, I will, I have no track at all tonight. So, what I can do for you, which would, may not assuage your peak, but it would be to contact you tomorrow and let you know.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll contact you tomorrow and let, and let you know for sure. I think what, what we're also trying to do is coordinate it with the larger policy reviews that are going through. But I, I will.
Let me just say that in, in front of everybody. That's an unacceptable answer that I get put in a pile someplace. Your review of these regulations of yours have been so delayed and so slow and, you know, it's going to take years to get it done. And I can understand that what has, I'm going to get the end of the line. You know, you don't like me getting up here and criticizing you and this is, this is it. I, it's payback time, isn't it?
I'm sure you are enjoying yourself and that's, that's all, you're, you're right. But, so I will contact you tomorrow on this. I'll reach out, I'll, I'll talk with Catherine and team.
Thank you.
You bet.
I have my remedies.
Okay, trustee and Board Chair reports, so.
I have something for future agenda items.
Oh.
So, I'm also having a problem putting items on the agenda and I have for months.
But what, what?
So, I'm actually, even though it's not.
What's not there?
So, the minutes policy, it's been at least four months. I just passed it out again. I've wanted a simple change that we just add in and standing committees and I want it to be discussed by the Board and voted on by the Board. So, I'm actually, even though it's not our policy, our policy is like the public, we're supposed to be able to make the request and it's supposed to come up on the agenda. That's not happening, so I'm going to make a motion. So, I move that we bring the minutes policy back to the next board meeting so we can discuss that simple change.
This is an AR?
No, I passed out the minutes policy. I passed out a couple of things. One of them is the minutes policy. I've also sent it to Chairman Cuso that shows that I want to add in and standing committees to that policy. And I've asked to have it on the Board agenda so we could talk about it and vote on it as a Board. And it's been at least four months. So, now, I'm going to do it in the motion. I move that we put that item on the agenda at the next board meeting. And I'm hoping there'll be a second so we can talk about it as a Board.
Is it an action item, though? It's just a, put, you know, it's a request item to request, so.
It is not working. That system of requesting is not working, so I'm asking the Board to direct President Kraft to put it on the agenda so that we can discuss it as a Board.
If I'm not mistaken, we had this discussion and that the, the staff is moving forward with minutes for standing committees.
It's the same thing. So, it's kind of like what Mr. Orton is talking about. You don't have the right to decide for yourself that it shouldn't come forward for this or that. We asked us something to put on the agenda, it should be put on the agenda and we can talk about it at that time. But for you as Chair to make the decision.
If you want minutes on a, for standing committees and the staff is going to do them, what's left?
I want it in the policy. I've asked to have the policy on the agenda for four months. I want the, that's my request. I want it on the agenda for the Board to discuss. We've said, that's our role is to make policy. I want to make policy. And I want it to be put on the agenda, which is our, to follow our agenda policy. All I should do is have to request it. It should be on the agenda. The Board can vote no, maybe they'll vote yes, but it needs to be put on the agenda. You don't have the right to not put our items on the agenda.
Okay, but I'm.
Because I want it in the policy.
It's an AR that we don't vote on.
What's an AR that we don't vote on? I'm asking to have it be put in the policy. I don't, I'm not talking about the AR. I'm asking to change the policy to include in our minutes policy that we will have minutes taken at our board meetings and at standing committee meetings. It's not the time to discuss it. It needs to be put on the agenda. That's the policy. If you look, I actually passed out the ed code on agendas and what he's talking about is the public has a legal right to place an item directly on the agenda. I don't think the ed code meant to exclude Board members from that. It should not be more difficult for a Board member to put an item on the agenda than the community. It should be equally as easy for a Board member to directly put an item on the agenda. And that's what I've asked for and you've refused.
No, I have not refused.
But it hasn't happened.
Okay, but I have not. Okay, but I have not refused, everything that you've asked for has been on the agenda, including your item tonight.
So, same question, would that be on the next agenda?
So we'll put it on the agenda as a request, uh, for the June meeting.
As a request, or it will be on the June meeting? It will be on the June meeting, that simple?
As a request for the June meeting, I cannot make that commitment to you right this minute.
This, listen, we listen to, report after report for hours, and when it comes time for us to do our business, one of our main roles is policymaking. But when I want to make policy, which I was elected to do, and the board chair decides what can be on the agenda, what can't, that's overstepping your bounds. We have a policy for putting items on the agenda, I'm supposed to submit it in writing, I've done that, month after month, it's been four months.
So it's not overstepping my bounds, because the board chair does have the opportunity to make sure that there isn't any staff reason, or any other reason that more information needs to be gained, there's a whole host of things.
That can be, if there's any consideration, that can be presented in the board meeting, that can be discussed in the board meeting.
For, at this point, so I, we'll request it to be on the June meeting.
And my second item, because it's related to this, is I want the agendas policy on the agenda as well, because this is the core of the problem, is that in the agenda policy, it says, "Members of the public may place matters directly, uh, related to the business of the district on the agenda," and board members are not mentioned, and that's being abused, and so that's the other policy I want on the agenda, to say, "Board members of the public and board members may place matters directly, uh, on the agenda." So I want, I would like those two policies on the agenda, so we can fix these problems, because it's getting in the way of our functioning. As far as the AR, we had an AR that actually addressed the problem, we approved it in March 2017, and I was happy with that, but since then, it's not online anymore, and Ron has on his own replaced it with another AR that is two and a half pages long, that we've never seen, or talked about, or agreed to. And that's the problem with ARs, that he can do whatever he wants, so-
I understand what you're saying, but like, do you hear any of the other trustees?
No, so I would like-
So, why don't you just, there is a process for putting things on the agenda.
And I followed it.
You-
I followed it, and it's not working.
In all honesty, like, I've seen, everything that you've requested has been on the agenda, now you're, you're taking one thing that wasn't on the agenda tonight, and you're making this broad application.
No, it's been month after month, if you, it's been month after month, and it's, in the AR that Ron created, even though we should just be able to put it on the agenda-
Forward with the meeting.
He said that through board action, we can do it, so if we have to do a board action, then we could do a board action to do it. The board can direct you, you work for the board, Mary Ann, you're supposed to represent the board and work for us.
Okay, so we have a request for, uh, minutes for standing committees.
And the agenda policy to add in board members.
Do you have that, Catherine? Okay, let's move to board ch, uh, trustee reports. Manvier, your, your last report with us, please.
All right, I'll make it a long one. Uh, since I haven't been here since, mm, March, no, April, so I guess one thing, I, I host, I moderated the Napa City Council debate, that went really well, we had about 130 people show up, there's a recording of it on Napa Broadcasting, that, thank you to Jeff for doing that for us. Then I attended the high school breakfast, Congress to campus, we had a form, we had two former congressmen come, congress members, members of Congress, come to the college, and we had dinner with them, which was really nice. I attended Alex Padilla's voter registration event, it was in the corporate center, and he talked about the new voting system happening with the new ballot system. At the end of the month, I look forward to going to the baseball game for May 11th, the trio graduation. I attended the Rock the Congress event at the Copia, which was really awesome, a quick story on that, I didn't have a ticket, actually, to go, the day before was the 75th anniversary, and I ran into Congressman Mike Thompson. I asked him, I was like, oh, are you looking forward to tomorrow's event, he was like, yeah, him, him and his aide were like, are you going, and I said, I would love to, I just don't know how to go. And then her aide, his aide was telling me that, uh, there's a scholarship, and I can apply for that, and in the middle, Congressman Mike Thompson interrupted her and said, oh, just put him down as my guest. So that's how I went to that event, which was cool. I obviously attended the 75th open house, uh, a cool little thing I did, I went to every police academy that came, and I asked them about issues that they face in their community. And, uh, a lot of them talked about auto thefts, in San Joaquin, it's theft of agriculture, like, full-on agricultural equipment, which I had no idea about. Yeah, it was, that was interesting, El Cerito talked about property crimes, West Sacramento's homelessness and mental health, uh, one of them had a big, had an increase in cocaine abuse, uh, which, uh, oh, Lodi had a meth increase of arrests. Then, one of the club I've gotten involved with is EndCase, the Napa County Alliance for Senior Education. On Tuesday, we had a meeting with Dr. Kraft, which went really well, and then yesterday, we were on Doris Gentry's TV show, and we were live on that, which was really cool, so I was on live TV, and that was a cool opportunity, on her, on the Edge event, then on June 14th, I look forward to going to the Elder Abuse Symposium. A few, about two months ago, me, Rosada, uh, Mary Ann, and Cuso, I think, and Dr. Kraft, we attended the, the four, the trio celebration of those who got a 4.0 and higher. That was cool.
Which included our new trustee?
Yes, he was there as well. And, uh, I think, um, on the last board report I have, I remember Michael Baldini, and, Michael Baldini and I asked about a trash can being placed here, and now there's chairs here, which is a step in the right direction, I guess. And then I, I'll be transferring to UC Davis in the fall. Then, I guess sort of related just to being a trustee and getting better communication skills, I, I sent a, I sent a DM to Assembly Member Frazier about an event he's hosting, it's, uh, the 7th Annual Sporting Clay Tournament, and tickets for that range from 4,000 to 1,500, and I, and I sent him a message asking if he needed any volunteers. He messaged me back saying to contact Lisa Stratton, then I contacted him, and she said, yeah, just come at 7:30, and you'll be good, and you can help out, and she told me that sometimes, if there's room, he, they'll take some of the volunteers to go shoot, so, might get to do that for free, which is pretty cool. And I think that-
Hang out with him more.
And that too. Yeah, no kidding. No kidding. I think that completes my report, and I've, I've had a great time doing this, and before you guys all go, I need a picture with the whole group right here in the front, so, we'll be leaving a little later. Yeah, right? Save the best for last.
Bags under our eyes.
Thank you, Manvier, and we've enjoyed having you, and congratulations on your transfer to Davis and all the other things that you're doing. Mr. Baldini?
Thank you, Manvier, it's a pleasure sitting next to you. Also enjoyed the 75th anniversary, the high school breakfast, the, uh, I enjoyed, uh, was able to participate in a couple of the Vintners' presentations, Alex Ryan, Tom Meadowcraft, and look forward to some others, as well as Trufathan. See you next month.
Baker?
Just start talking. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, everyone, and, uh, so I was able to go to the open house and got my first sunburn of the season, it was a great afternoon. Um, also was happy to welcome NVC at the, um, NVSD's Family Festival. I attended the high school breakfast, uh, McPherson Selection Committee, and tomorrow at 12, at the PAC, um, I went to the EOPS event, and Puente event, and, uh, to the presentations for, uh, VPI, so congratulations. And I'll be going to Trio tomorrow. Completed my dance class with my son, we didn't get a grade, but I will give my son a solid B+. He doesn't get an A because he delighted a little too much and making me dizzy.
Thank you. Uh, Iverson?
Uh, I attended the women's soccer fundraiser event, that was a really neat event, it was, had a really good turnout, uh, FC 1839 had done this little blow-up where you could, uh, kinda like a bullseye for soccer ball, soccer balls, that was fun, I did get a bullseye, I still have it. Anyways, that was a good event, and I'm happy to have Eric Chair now as our VPI, so congratulations, and thank you, that's my report.
Trustee Segura?
Open House was definitely fun. Are we gonna have it yearly? No. I also attended the, the, um, the women's soccer fundraiser. The food was good, um, no, but it was a really nice event. Uh, attended the third and final, um, Academic Affairs Forum, congratulations again. The VIP Academic Affairs Forum. Uh, the Hospitality Symposium, that was wonderful, it was a great event, and I'm glad that, that we're partners with the Vintners Association. They publicly recognized it as a real community college, so, so that's, that's really something. After that, I came to the job fair, went to the Puente reception, and the annual high school breakfast, uh, and the trio event, even though that was, so, that's it, folks.
Trustee Rios?
Well, I attended a couple of committee meetings that almost went as long as this meeting, well, actually, this meeting made them seem short, I thought they were very long, but now they seem short. I couldn't even make the end of the, uh, Real Property Committee, it went so long, I had another meeting. This meeting is not doing anything for my golf game, uh, tomorrow, I'm playing in the Ag in the Classroom fundraiser, uh, maybe playing, I may be sleeping out on the course, um, but, uh, that is it.
Trustee Martinson?
So I also went to the 75th anniversary, which I enjoyed, um, facilitated the Audit and Finance Subcommittee meeting, which I thought was actually pretty short, were you talking about my committee? It was only an hour, I think, anyway. I also went to the VP of Instruction Candidates Forum, and trustee Mancuso and the president's fireside chat with college constituents, and lastly, I just had just a regular meeting with, uh, the president and trustee Baldini, and that's it.
All right. First of all, I want to say what a great evening, even though it isn't as good as it was, great, loads of great news, and upbeat, uh, just tons of awesome stuff at the beginning of the meeting. Of course, congratulations, Eric, thrilled, thrilled, and, um, and went to the 75th, stood on stage with Ron, and just was so honored to receive the proclamations from, um, our senator, assembly member, our congressman, all of the cities came together and gave us a proclamation as well, it was, uh, it was great. And high school breakfast, the Congress to campus dinner, the two women were awesome, you'd be surprised to know that I spent most of my time at dinner talking to the Republican woman. And, um, oh, we had a full day workforce alliance of the North Bay Retreat, where I just said, "The college, don't forget the college, that's where we need to send people to, that's where that funding needs to go, that we're receiving, to get people upskilled and into the workforce." And classified lunch, Puente, we had two fireside chats, a lot of interesting, even though they were small, great, interesting information. And with that, our next regular meeting will be held on, oh, is there any reason we need to continue into closed session? And announcement of future meeting is, uh, is 6/14/18. And with that, meeting is adjourned.
Actually, I'm going to watch my graduate from college, Humboldt State. Yep, yep, way far away, thank you.